Now, we're going to be moving quickly today. We have a lot of cases, so watch for your case. As you see your case approaching, you can start moving up to the front. Thirty-one ten Lincoln. Does anyone have the sign-in sheet for thirty-one ten Lincoln? Thirty-one ten Lincoln. Okay. Does anybody have that sheet? Thirty-one ten Lincoln? Okay, you're right. That should have been. Thirty-one ten Lincoln. And then sign on the top or the bottom. Yes. Yes, and your address and your. That's the address you're here for?
Yeah.
Okay, you can put that address if you'd like. As long as you get noticed at it, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and you have a zip code, the zip code part? Okay. Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, because we're gonna be. Send it to your house.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Again, does anyone have the Lincoln appearance form? Can that be missing? Oh, I'm sorry. All right, go ahead and sign the appearance forms, gentlemen. All right, gentlemen, you're gonna look for the address of the matter that you are here for. So look up top, as you can see. There's the addresses. Once you find it, if you're here for the matter, sign up on top. If you're here against, sign on the bottom. We need your name, address, and zip code. Okay, so what matter are you here for? Um, I think I saw it down there. Let's see down, oh, that's sixty-six, huh? Eleven forty-two Ashland, I'm gonna sneak here. Let's see. Forty-two. And there's some blank ones if we can't find it. Does anyone have the one for eleven forty-two Ashland? Oh. Okay, and once you're done with the forms, please return to the table. Thank you, counsel. Hi. Hi, counsel, how are you? Okay, again, thank you, everybody, on these appearance forms. These are so important, and we do appreciate it. So remember, find your address. If you're here for, you sign up top. If you're here against, sign on the bottom. And then put your zip codes, your address and your zip codes. If you're here to continue a matter, you're gonna line up to the aisle that goes down to the court reporter. Thank you. Yeah, look for your address. There it is, okay. And then if you're here for the matter, you sign up top. If you're here against, sign on the bottom. There's plenty of pens. Okay. And zip codes are especially helpful, because I have to send out these resolutions. Okay, thank you. Okay. Let me just check something. Okay, so you are here against, right? Okay, well, counsel for five four five, five 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 East Oakwood Boulevard. Come to the back, please. Five five, five four. Victor, we have a question in the back here with the police officer. You've signed in on the appearance form? And there's a, there's. And. And so they go pretty fast. Some of the cases are together because of the. So those cases will be heard together. So it's not as bad as it looks. Okay, well, the attorney for five four five, five 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 East Oakwood Boulevard, come, uh, return to the rear of the room.
Everybody, this is just a quick announcement. Um, on our, on the website for city council chambers, they're no longer allowing backpacks or large bags in city council chambers. So in the future, for the attorneys that come pretty much every month, please be mindful. Make sure that you let your clients know that they are not gonna be permitted in with backpacks or large bags.
All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Brian Sanchez, and I'm the chairman of the ZBA. With me today are commissioners Sam Toya to my right, and Angela Brooks, and Ann McDonald to my left. I'd like to call this meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to order. First, I hereby designate alternate member Ann McDonald to take Zurich Esposito's place as a regular member at today's meeting. Welcome, Ann. Next, I will take a roll call vote to establish quorum. Commissioner Toya.
Here.
Commissioner Brooks.
Here.
Commissioner McDonald.
Here.
I am present, quorum is established. The minutes of February's meeting have been distributed. Unless there are corrections, I move that we approve the minutes as distributed. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the minutes are approved. I move that we approve today's agenda. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the agenda is approved. Now I will take continuances and withdrawals.
Members of the board, are you able to hear me? Amy Kurson from the law firm Reyes Kurson. I'm here on behalf of Leah Moskov. She is the applicant opposer to an administrative adjustment, so we're here on an appeal, asking for a continuance on call number eighty-five twenty-four A. Subject property twenty-one thirty-three to thirty-five West Charleston Street. We just asked to have this to continue to a time when we can have five board members. And we're not able to proceed today, because we'd have to have three votes in favor, and only three are able to vote on this case today.
So the applicant wants to wait for five?
Um, it's my understanding that although you have four members present today, only three can vote.
Right, I believe one is gonna recuse. Um, all right, well, what we'll do is we will continue to May seventeen.
It would be ideal, thank you.
What I, I did wanna say something, though, before, um, before I let you go, and that is, I did review the eight hundred and fifty-eight page submission.
Thank you.
And I expect a very concise summary of the points of why the zoning administrator aired when we do hear this.
Thank you, Chairman. My, um, my client prepared the binder before retaining counsel, so she's retained counsel for the hearing.
Okay.
And I practiced before the board.
Yes, I, I'm, I'm familiar. I've seen you before. Um, okay, all right, so this is calendar number eighty-five twenty-four A. Will be continued to May seventeen, twenty twenty-four, the nine AM call, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, any other continuances or withdrawals? Seeing none, Victor, go ahead and call the first case.
Twenty-four, eighty, twenty-four, eighty, twenty-four, eighty-four, twenty-four. Fifty-five, forty-four, fifty-five, East Oakwood Boulevard.
Extension request. What about the?
Going back to case three seventy-nine, twenty-two, S, sixty-six, seventy, South Ashland Avenue.
Morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Uh, my name for the record is Thomas S. Moore. And, um, I appeared on this case about a year ago, and it's a very ambitious, um, plan to have a fifty-five and older, um, uh, senior apartments. Uh, the applicant is taking a building that was a hundred years ago in the nineteen twenties was a belle of the ball on South Ashland Avenue. It, it, its guts are beautiful, and he's spent over a million dollars preparing it to renovate it and make it the fifty-five and older. Plus, it'll have four, um, uh, commercial spaces. And, uh, but because of the economy and the, uh, when he penciled the thing, the prices have all gone up to do the renovation. And also, um, the financing has gone up. So he needs more time to try to go forward with this, and that's, our request is for a one-year extension.
Okay. Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Morning.
Good morning. Sorry about that. Uh, for the record, my name is Mike Noonan. I'm with Foley and Lardner, offices at three twenty-one North Clark Street, Suite three thousand in Chicago. Uh, together with Donna Pugh, partner at Foley and Lardner, I represent the applicant connections for abused women and their children, or CAWC for short. Here with me today is applicant representative Stephanie Love Patterson, the executive director of CAWC. Um, CAWC is here before you today, seeking an extension of two special uses that were unanimously, unanimously approved by this board on April twenty-seventh, two thousand and three. One for a domestic violence shelter and one for a community center. Along with these two special uses, the board also approved two variations for the project. One to reduce the required minimum rear setback from forty-five feet to zero, and another to reduce the required minimum rear yard open spaces from one thousand two hundred and forty-eight square feet to zero square feet. CAWC plans to convert portions of the existing building at thirty-three eleven West Carroll into a much-needed domestic violence shelter and community center with accessory offices. Um, I can go through a description of the project, but, uh.
No, I think just get to the basis of, of the extension request.
Sure. So as set forth in our request, which you all have, uh, work on the project has been delayed by discovered conditions in the building and unforeseen change in the project team. You know, as you know, the project involves preserving portions of a building that are almost a hundred years old. Um, after CAWC acquired the property in June of twenty twenty-three, they commissioned exploratory demolition, preparation of a forensic report of the existing building, which found that the existing foundations were actually made of stone rather than concrete, which was originally assumed. And their existing roof trusses were in very poor condition, which requires replacement or reinforcement. As this was unfolding, one of their main design consultants had to withdraw from the project due to lack of adequate staffing and future uncertainty. So the work towards a building permit has been ongoing, but has been delayed. I'd also like to note for the board, for the record, that the zoning code doesn't, doesn't contain an express counterpart version to extend variations as it does for special uses. Um, but if possible, I would seek an, an extension for those variations as well. They, they were all granted through the same approval, the same hearing. Um, the conditions that necessitated the variations haven't changed, so I just wanted to make that request for the record. And, uh, applicant representative Stephanie Love Patterson is here, if you have any questions, but if you have known, we respectfully request a one-year extension.
Any questions from the board? So I just wanna let you know, I, I don't see a, um, a basis in the zoning, uh, code that would allow us to grant a, um, extension on a variation. Um, but we'll take the matter under advisement.
All right, thank you.
And Chair, just for the record, I'm recused from these matters.
Okay, thank you. Ann. Yeah. Uh, objectors, uh, that table right there. All right, um, would everyone who is planning to testify today, please raise your right hand, both the applicant witnesses and the objectors. Uh, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. Uh, Counselor Manik, um, you may proceed, but, uh, first, let me just start with a question, because I know we've got objectors here. We continued it for a second, so you could have a conversation with them. You're not able to resolve the dispute?
We have a, like, a resolution, but we don't have the time to implement it. So I, I think we have commitments to it.
Okay.
But I, I don't think that they're willing to accept the commitment.
Okay, so you wish to proceed?
Yeah, we have to.
Okay. All right, well, then, uh, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Tyler Manik. I'm attorney with the law firm of Shane Banks, Kenyon Schwartz. I'm the attorney for the applicant Eagle OZB two LP. I'm also joined, uh, by Jamie Nahon, who's directly to my right, who's the principal of the applicant. John Hannah, the project architect, uh, to Jamie's right, and Stacy Slayer T., uh, Jamie's, uh, real estate consultant, uh, to John's right. As a brief overview, the applicant seeks to redevelop five four five East Oakwood with the four-story, forty-eight dwelling unit multifamily building with eight accessory, uh, parking spaces. Five four five East Oakwood is currently improved with a four-story school building last used in twenty sixteen, but has been vacated after environmental issues. And has been vacant, uh, since twenty sixteen and on the market for sale. Given the environmental issues in the past eight years of neglect, the current school building is unusable and can't be repurposed. The lot at five four five East Oakwood is part of a larger zoning lot containing a religious assembly building at five 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 East Oakwood. Five four five East Oakwood also lacks alley access to accommodate traditional parking areas. The variations that we're seeking here today are to separate the zoning lot into independent zoning lots for five four five East Oakwood and five 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 East Oakwood. Uh, and the parking relief that we're seeking here is traditionally done as an administrative adjustment under the current, uh, Chicago zoning ordinance, but due to the variations that are triggered by the lot split, that is also before you today. If these variations are not granted, five four five East Oakwood would be incapable of being improved, leaving either the blight caused by the abandoned school building or creating another vacant lot in an area that has a lot of city-owned vacant lots surrounding it. Five four five East Oakwood is a transit-serve location with several public transportation options surrounding it. The proposed project complies with the city's new equitable transit-oriented guidelines and is keeping with the character of the area. The block is predominantly improved with similar multifamily uses and zoned entirely for multifamily uses with a similar zoning to what we have here today. All of the buildings on the block have non-conforming setbacks, and most on our side of the block have lacked the required rear yard open space. Um, at this time, I would call, uh, Mr. Nahon as my first witness.
Okay.
Mr. Nahon, you are the owner of the applicant, correct?
Yes.
And you heard my opening statement and summary of this variation application. Do you concur with my statement?
Yes.
And you submitted an affidavit, uh, with, in connection with the finding the fact, correct?
Yes.
And the statements you made in the affidavit are true and correct?
Yes.
And are you including that testimony that you provide in that affidavit as a testimony you, that you're providing here today?
Yes.
Um, the building at five four five East Oakwood has been abandoned since twenty sixteen, correct?
Yes.
And you're purchasing five four five East Oakwood from the Catholic bishop, correct?
Yes.
Uh, the, the intent behind this application is to preserve the existing religious assembly building at five 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 East Oakwood and develop five four five East Oakwood under the existing zoning, correct?
Yes.
Uh, you intend to build a four-story, forty-eight dwelling unit building with eight, with an eight-space accessory parking lot, correct?
Yes.
Uh, without these variations, you could not build this project, correct?
Yes.
Uh, in order to make this pro, project financially viable and obtain financing, you need forty-eight dwelling units, correct?
Yes.
And the proposed project that we're here is, would give you a rate of return of six percent, correct?
Yes.
Um, and you would not be able to receive any rate of return if these variations were not granted, correct?
Yes.
And that's because this lot wouldn't be buildable, correct?
Yes.
You never changed the lot configuration that you're purchasing from the Catholic bishop, correct?
Correct.
And currently, five four five East Oakwood, as being owned by the Catholic bishop, doesn't generate any property taxes, correct?
Correct.
And by improving this pro, this lot with your project, this proper project will generate significant property taxes, correct?
Correct.
And you researched the local housing market?
Yes.
And in your research, did you determine that there was a shortage of housing options in this area?
Yes, I did. And I, I brought along a consultant here who's a local expert who can.
And. And this project will fill the gap in the housing, of the housing demand in this area?
Yes, it will.
And this project should also bring, uh, residents to the area, the spur economic growth and patronized local commercial establishments, correct?
Yes, it will.
And the adjacent religious assembly use is supportive of this project?
Yes, it is.
Um, and you've worked closely with Alderman Robinson about this project?
Yes, I have.
And Alderman Robinson supports this, uh, project, correct?
Yes, he does.
And, uh, prior to filing this application, uh, you sent notice and had an in-person community meeting for this project, correct?
Yes, we did.
And at that community meeting, you didn't receive any objections?
No objections.
And, and because of that, you proceeded with this project, correct?
Yes, I did.
At this time, I will call Mr. Hannah.
John Hannah, President of Hannah Architects, Inc., one eighty, West Washington, Chicago, Illinois.
And, Mr. Hannah, you're the project architect who prepared the plan subject to this application, correct?
I am.
And did you submit an affidavit to the board prior to today's hearing?
I did.
And are the statements that you made in that affidavit true and correct?
They are.
And are you including the testimony you provided in that affidavit as your testimony, uh, as part of your testimony here today?
Yes.
The, the plan you prepared for this application proposes to construct a four-story, forty-eight dwelling unit multifamily building with an eight-space accessory parking lot, correct?
Uh, that's correct.
And before preparing this plan, you had at least four prior clients trying to purchase this property over the past, you know, years, uh, who cannot make the project work.
Um, that is correct.
And the bulk, and this, but this is the one project that is gonna work.
Uh, it appears that way, yes.
And the Balkan density, and just to be clear, those other projects fell apart because they couldn't get a rate of return, correct?
Uh, that's absolutely true.
And the Balkan density of the four-story, forty-eight dwelling unit building we're proposing here is permitted in the existing RM five zoning, correct?
Uh, that's correct.
And this lot is considered a transit-serve location because it's located approximately five hundred and fifty feet from the Pershing and Vincent's CTA bus line and to, about twenty-four hundred square feet, or twenty-four hundred feet from the Indiana Green Line Station. And within thirteen hundred feet of other CTA bus lines such as South Martin Luther King Drive and South Cottage Grove, correct?
Um, that's all true.
And in your, in your opinion, does a project have suitable public transportation options to permit a, permit eight parking spaces?
Uh, it does.
Um, the city's ETOD ordinance permits this project to have eight parking spaces if the building provides forty-eight bike spaces, correct?
That's correct.
And this project provides forty-eight bike spaces, correct?
Uh, it does.
And because of the, these attributes, typically, the zoning administrators authorize, approve this parking ratio as an administrative adjustment, correct?
Uh, that's correct.
And the reasons for this variation is that five four five East Oakwood shares a zoning lot with five 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 East Oakwood, which is improved with an existing legal non-conforming religious assembly use, correct?
Yes.
And if five four five East Oakwood had normal property lines and was not tied to the religious assembly building of five 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 East Oakwood, this project would not need any variations, correct?
Uh, that's true.
And five four five East Oakwood also lacks alley access, correct?
Correct.
And the lack of alley access severely limits your ability to add any more parking spaces to this lot, correct?
Uh, it does.
And due to these hardships, strict adherence to the Chicago zoning ordinance would prevent you from designing a four-story, forty-eight dwelling unit building that could otherwise be done as a right, correct?
That's correct.
And given the property's long history of vacancy, this strict adherence would constitute a hardship, um, on the applicant, correct?
Uh, yes.
And you had a chance to research the different buildings on the block, correct?
Uh, we did.
And in your findings, the block is predominantly multifamily buildings, correct?
Uh, correct.
And other buildings on the block have similar or greater. or greater density than what we're proposing, correct?
True.
And in your review of the block, most of the buildings had non-conforming setbacks, correct?
Yes.
Most of the buildings had non-conforming rear yard open space, correct?
Yes.
And there are several buildings nearby that have lower parking ratios than what's being proposed, correct?
True.
And do the proposed variations promote public health, safety, and general welfare by improving a vacant building?
Yes.
And by activating this long vacant lot, will the development bring new residents and vitality to this block?
Oh, yes.
Is amassing in uses of the building consistent with the character of the buildings in the area?
It is.
Is a proposed variation compatible with the emerging land use and development pattern of the neighborhood by building a building consistent with the character of the block and the vacant lot?
Yes.
And will the proposed project infringe on adequacy of light air privacy or access to any of the neighboring properties?
It will not.
Does the proposed variation encourage environmentally responsible development practices by the environmental remediation that's gonna be involved with this project and not engage, correct?
That's true.
This building will be designed in strict compliance with the Chicago Building Code and all generally accepted engineering principles, correct?
Of course.
And by building in compliance with the Chicago Building Code and generally accepted engineering principles, the proposed variation rehabilitation will not increase the danger of fire or public safety, correct?
Correct, it will not.
And will this proposed project diminish or impair property values in the area?
It will not impair.
Unless there's questions for Mr. Hannah right now, move to Mrs. Slattery.
We'll do questions at the end, so go ahead.
Stacy, could you please state your name for the record? And you're a licensed real estate broker?
Yes.
And you engage in leasing and management of similar buildings of this type, correct?
We engage in leasing in the area, yes.
And in your experience in leasing buildings of this type, is the parking ratio appropriate?
Yeah, and in what we found in the buildings that in this case have smaller units, the one beds, the two beds, and in areas where there's a lot of transportation options, the parking demand is significantly lower. In fact, in recent buildings that we've had in the area that the parking isn't always fully utilized that is available.
Just move that microphone a little closer to you.
And you had a chance to, you've driven by this lot several times, correct?
I have, in fact, I was there last night at 6:45 and took pictures of every artery off that intersection. There was parking everywhere. I probably could have parked forty cars last evening.
Okay. I have no more questions for Miss Slattery, but I do have kind of some exhibits that I didn't include in my findings of fact that I put together. Can I add them to?
Okay.
What I'm gonna be giving to the board is the city's ETOD ordinance that goes, describes the benefits for the ETOD and the parking reductions. I'm also providing the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, like their community snapshot for this area, which describes how this has got a hundred percent walkability score and a hundred percent transit availability. And rather than take all this board's time talking about the ETOD policy, I figured it'd be better just to give it to you, to put it as part of the record.
Agreed.
And I have an email from Bill Higgins, who's a public use supervisor for the Chicago Department of Transportation, where he says the parking ratio in his opinion is appropriate. And then I also have a letter of support from the Alderman.
We've got the letter of support from the Alderman.
Let me, for most of it, correct, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, and I also have, we, the other one thing is, we have at least five trips to this location and we took pictures primarily to get the character of the area, but they also show the abundance of street parking in the area as well as a fifteen-minute walking map of all the uses within fifteen minutes walking and then an area of the property that you can see all the city-owned vacant land around, which kind of shows it's not really well-developed around to cause street parking problems. I have another. Emmanuel, do you have that other set? He's got another one.
This is just another copy of this? What is this?
The pictures and...
Okay.
But that concludes our case in chief.
Okay. Yeah. Are there any questions of the, from the board before we go to the objectors? Okay, let's turn to the objectors. Which, which one of you would like to speak first?
Thank you.
Sir, if you could start by stating and spelling your name for the record.
Sure, my name is Uzoma Norum, spelt U-Z-O-M-A, last name Norum, N-N-O-R-O-M.
And can you tell us your address, please?
558 East Oakwood Boulevard, Unit 4W.
Okay, and tell us why you're here in objection.
I'm here in objection for several reasons. The applicants have listed multiple reasons for why they believe the variation should be granted, and so I'll go by one by one. From our perspective, we live on Oakwood, all three of us, and we're property owners there. And when this first came to light, we were given a letter by the applicant with very little notice to meet in person. The notice was so short that some of us, for example, myself, were out of the country and could not attend. However, given this letter, and once we became aware, we started communication with the applicant to inform them of our concerns. One of the residents that was able to attend in person, Antoinette Hall, she could not be here, she's one of the residents. I forwarded the email to Ranjiv Moti, who's a staff here. One of the residents did attend, and she did express concern and objection. It was stated earlier, when the lawyer for the applicant asked, "Did anyone raise any objections?", and his answer was, "No", that is not correct from my perspective. Not only did Antoinette Hall raise objections, I have email documentation that I raised multiple objections as recently as a few days ago and as far back as a few months ago. My objections were not directly addressed. In fact, the email that I sent a few days ago was never replied to by Tyler, the lawyer for the applicant. So that would be the first point, just regarding the objections from the community standpoint.
Are you, just to clarify here, are you saying that Antoinette Hall attended this community meeting that they talked about and wasn't objection? Okay, right, I get what you're saying. All right, what's, what next?
So another issue that was raised was the idea of the lower parking ratios in the nearby apartments. And so to that point, and I addressed this with the applicant's lawyer a few days ago, but I never received response, there are nearby apartment buildings. And what's interesting is that at those buildings, for example, directly in front of 545 East Oakwood Boulevard, there is an apartment building, 556 East Oakwood, and they do provide parking for far fewer residents. If you go directly west, so I think if you're looking at that map right there, you can see it, there's that 540 to 554 building, so it's directly north or directly up in that image, and you can see the parking lot right behind them. They're able to provide parking for their residents. The building right next to them, moving left on the screen, you can see 521 East Oakwood. They also provide parking for the residents and have far fewer residents. So I don't understand why the exception should be granted for 545 East Oakwood Boulevard. If you go even further west on Oakwood Boulevard, they mentioned that there were lower parking ratios. However, of note is that those particular buildings are adjacent to Martin Luther King Boulevard, which is a double boulevard system. So they really do have extenuating parking accommodations. Hello? They have extenuating parking accommodations because they can park along Martin Luther King Boulevard, where there are lanes for cars and there are lanes strictly for parking. So they essentially have a de facto parking lot. This would not be the case over here. So when we examine kind of similar buildings and state that they have lower parking ratios, it's, you have to take into consideration that that's not actually true in practice. They also have use of the Chicago Chicken Waffles parking lot. So there's extra parking for them, and that would explain why they can kind of operate. That doesn't apply to this particular building.
Let me, let me jump in with a question. Do you believe that the street parking in the area is insufficient?
It's grossly insufficient, and I have evidence of that. I don't know if Ranjiv was able to upload those images.
Don't see him at the moment. Oh, I think he's going to print them out.
Okay, so the area is grossly underserviced for parking. On any given day, in fact, it's ironic, at the applicant's proposed site, people tend to double park on that sidewalk because there's no parking. So you can see where that little red landmark is. People park on that very sidewalk because the building is abandoned, that and double park on the street. So the idea that there is ample parking, I mean, if you cherry pick the time of day when you, people are at work, of course, of course, it's possible to say that there would be ample parking, but that's not the case. And what's most concerning is that for some residents, for example, are disabled residents like Antoinette Hall, if she were forced to walk several blocks just to access her unit, that would be very unsafe. And the neighborhood is a transitional kind of neighborhood. It's, it is a nice neighborhood, but it wouldn't be safe enough for someone to be expected, especially an elderly person, or in the winter, to walk several blocks. It's unreasonable. So there was that, that's one issue regarding the ratio of parking spots at nearby apartments. Regarding public transportation, it was said that this is nearby public transportation. In theory, again, that may be true only if you consider that there is a single bus line one block away. Outside of that, the Green Line is over half a mile walk, and that's going through alleyways that are not well-lit. And the bus line that is one block away comes at best maybe twice an hour, and that's during peak times. So it isn't really close enough, in my opinion, to justify this based off of public transportation. And when I raised this issue with the applicant's lawyer, I asked, is the rental properties that you are proposing, are they going to be, for example, luxury apartments? In which case, tenants will not be even likely using public transportation. I never received any response from the applicant's lawyer, and I have email correspondence to that effect.
Okay, so I've got, I've got the parking objection, I've got inadequate public transportation objection. What else, if anything? Oh, you want to go next? Okay, sir, can you state and spell your name for the record?
Yeah, my name is Desmond Orr, D-E-S-M-O-N-D. Last name is Orr, O-R-R.
And can you tell us your address, please?
620 East Oakwood Boulevard. I've been there for fifteen years, I own it, it's a single-family home. You look at this screen, the top, across the street from the red dot, that's the north side of the street. Going right is the east, the second yellow highlighted building, the second one, is mine. That's not a vacant lot, that's my home. The entire piece. It's, it's laughable for someone to come here and say that there's a lot of vacant lots on Oakwood Boulevard. They're not. That's owned by the one that's adjacent to the first, yellow. A family owns it. The one that's adjacent at the bottom side here next to the black, a family owns it. We don't have vacant lots. We have family-owned properties. Everybody here owns their place. It is not a renter's place with excessive amounts of densely packed renters nor multi-unit family buildings. They are not. They're all individual families. The one directly next to me is an owner, top, and a renter, bottom, but beside that, the entire block is owned by individuals. We've been there for a long time. It's laughable for someone to come and say, "We want to tear down that building", which is what they're saying, "and build a new building that would be in line with the block." My home was built in 1885. It is on the registered landmark. We didn't get Oakwood historically landmarked because there's too many problems with that, tangential issues, I should say. But a new building would be a joke. We can't fight that right now, but we, I guess, but we can fight, you've gotta be kidding, to put forty-eight units there and then have eight parking spaces? They're going to flood Oakwood. It happens every Sunday because we have three churches. We have what is now, what was called Holy Angels. We have Monumental Baptist, and then we also have BIS, which is Israel Samuel AME Church. So they are all there. Every Sunday, you can't park. That doesn't include a wedding, a funeral, a community event. Oakwood Boulevard is densely packed with those buildings and parking as it is. To have someone come in, bring bulldozers, bring equipment to raise and then rebuild, and not put parking is an insult to everybody who lives there. And we've lived there a long time, and there are people who were born on Oakwood in the twenties that still live there. And that's, that's just in the fourth ward. The third ward has it as well. And just so we all know, the third ward starts on the west side of Vincennes. On the east side of Vincennes is the fourth ward. So I don't, I don't think anybody on that side of the table has literally been there to see what it is, to walk the place, to understand the residents, to get a feel for the community. It's a joke for an architect to say that this is going, it's not gonna be detrimental, it's gonna be helpful. It's not, it'd be terrible. I don't, it doesn't matter who buys it, it doesn't matter the timeframe. Please do not push this through without us having the ability to address on a minute, at a minimum, parking. We have to have it addressed, please and thank you.
Thank you. Sir, would you like to go next?
Sure.
State your, state and spell your name for the record.
My name's Tom Schneider. I'm a resident owner of 558 East Oakwood Boulevard, 3W.
Spelling of your last name?
S-C-H-N-E-I-D-E-R. Just to echo what my neighbors are saying, this proposal is, will create quite an untenable situation when we're talking about forty-eight parking spots, forty-eight units for eight parking spots. Sure, there are sequences where there is available street parking, but when Sundays happen, when random events throughout the weekend, throughout the week from churches happen, there is very little parking available. I have visual evidence of that, where I took a video on Sunday where I walked all the way down Oakwood, all the way down Vincennes, and there was absolutely no parking available at all. So when you're considering members of the community who are elderly, who are disabled, and they would have to make that walk, that is going to put a burden on them, and that is definitely unfair for them. And that's just aside from us being able to live in our community in the way that we want and the way that we had. When it comes to the, the transportation available, I know Mr. Menken mentioned the transit score. I looked up the transit score on Zillow. It's sixty-one out of a hundred, as Uzo said. Parking is, the, the Green Line is more than a half mile away. The walking, you know, the grocery store... The walking, you know, the grocery store Mariano's, it's nearby, but I don't think it's walking distance for, for most people. So I don't buy the idea that this is something that you're going to be able to create a, a unit of 48 apartments for people and rely on them as being commuters. When you consider really no enforcement's in place and how you control for them not owning cars, we talked, we discussed with Mr. Menken how that could be issued, but nothing sufficient to us has been provided because they have no control over who owns a car. They have no control over what visitors come there. You're talking about 48 people. That's potential for, for 48 visitors on a given day, even if there's 10, 5, 20, whatever the amount is on a given day. That's going to take up public available street parking. That's going to put the residents there in a bind. And we don't feel that we were sufficiently given time to negotiate this. We're, we're told at the last minute that we can come with a viable option of, of coming through with permit parking, but we got to allow this to happen before that happens. And a handshake verbal agreement is just foolish historically for us to go by. So with respect to them, we understand the need that of developing communities all throughout Chicago is important. But it needs to be done with respect for the existing community. And we feel whatever, if, if there has been any respect, it's been at the last minute. And frankly, we're just not, we're not pleased with that. So as I said, I have visual evidence of just the, the parking just being insufficient during, during certain days and the, the argument that it is sufficient. It's just, it's not true.
I'm a founding member of the Oakwood Boulevard Neighborhood Association. I'm on the board now. I've been on the board since the beginning. These guys have never shown up to a meeting of ours. No one's ever asked us what we thought. We have hundreds of members of, of the single families and in the, in the one apartment building that we have, that's the, that are also members of the OBNA. If anyone had come to us and said, hey, we will propose this, you'd have, you'd have been having a fight from the second you spoke until the last dying breath of every member of the board. We do not approve, we do not want this for a building, a street of our character. Keep in mind, it's the shortest boulevard in the city's boulevard system. It has great, great character. At the end of our street are five individual 5,000 square foot homes. Five. They're not owner, they're not rental units. That's what it is. That's what Oakwood's all about. It's about family, community, ownership, involvement and commitment to that boulevard and the surrounding area. 48 units with no parking is a non-starter. Thank you.
I think Ranji was not able to upload it, but I have it right here and it has 545 East Oakwood, the proposed site labeled so that you can see for reference.
Okay.
While we're looking at that, can I ask my question?
Yeah, go ahead.
And I do want to have, I do want to ask a question and just to start, I'm super familiar with the area. I lived in Oakwood Shores for a while and in previous iterations of my career, I was a development manager at CHA for Oakwood Shores, did the master plan there. So I absolutely know this block. I eat at Chicken and Waffles pretty often. So I start by saying I'm sensitive to the situation, particularly on Sundays. And you did bring up permit parking. I'm just curious, have you guys, aside from this development, just in general, have you all gone through that process in general? Because it is, if it's a, well, I know it is on Sundays, so that's when I go. Is that something you've already pursued? And then secondly, you, I forgot, yes. Mr. Orr? You can't hear me? Okay. I was asking, I was just indicating I'm familiar with the area and I'm sensitive to that. And Mr. Orr, you mentioned specifically about the building being rental or multifamily. Did you have particular concerns about the design specifically not fitting in? Or just the fact that it's a multifamily development? So two questions about the permit parking. Have you guys pursued that? Cause it sounds like that would be a good idea regardless of this. And then second, this particular building, is it the 48 units or is it the design specifically?
Well, it's, it's a myriad of things and I'll, I'll address this way. While, while I am a founding member of OBNA and I'm on the board, I believe I can speak for everybody there, but I think it'd be aggressive of me to say, hey, I just don't like what it looks like. I would put it to our board and that's kind of the community spirit that we have there. We've never been shown a design. We never had an opportunity to say, you know what? This does fit with my 130 year old home. That's a three-story brownstone that sits behind a wrought iron fence that I am, I'm the dude that wants to fight people if you touch my grass. I mean, I'm that guy. So I'm very, very particular about the, about the, about the block and the things that we do on it. So no, we would, we would all object to that. There's no, I'd think, I think I can say that with 100% confidence. But no one's ever asked us. And this is, these are kind of things that happen, I think, in, in, in certain communities where if the people get a, a foot in the door, they try to kick it wide open. Well, well, we're standing there pushing back and I want to push back with everything I have today. To address what you asked also about parking and permit parking, we have worked, again, I think it's the 13th, it might be the 14th year of our being an official OBNA. Now Will Burns was our first alderman. Pat Doll, I believe, has always been the third ward alderman the whole time. They may have some, some third ward permit parking someplace, but the fourth ward doesn't, except for the South Loop that I'm aware of. Specifically asked both Will and Sophia, if I may use their first names so freely, if we could get permit parking just to push back against the, the density that comes with people having parties that, not parties as in ruckus parties, but an event, let's say, at Holy Angels or at BIS or at, or at Monumental, because it just spills over. Not to mention Northeastern has a building on the corner that also has things like voting, which we, we love. We, we appreciate all those things, but people park and it gets crazy. This is, we, we have to remember, Oakwood Boulevard is where the Bud Billiken Parade starts. That's the staging. I get to come, my mother comes in town from Detroit, gets to stand on my front lawn and shake Jesse Jackson's hands. It's the greatest thing in the world for her, right? So now we want to tear up Holy Angels, build that. There's no way it could be done in time. That would, that would take away also Bud Billiken from our block because it'd be a construction zone. They don't know that because they don't care. I care. These guys are talking about they couldn't get the right rate of return. Well, then go somewhere else. It's that simple. This is not the only square on the board. Go find one. We don't get permit parking because they wouldn't allow it. They being the alderman offices we've asked. So if there were permit parking, I don't know that we can fight back because apparently it's zoned. But as I listen, it's zoned. Based on the combination of 545 and 555, then they're going to try to separate it and then do some, they're going to take everything from 55, put it to 45 and make it make sense or allowed to build there. No, no, no.
And then I, I had a question for you because you did say you had some concessions that you guys just hadn't had time to implement. I'm just curious what those were and.
So, well, there's two potential concessions. The first one is, yes, we discussed the permit parking because that is the traditional solution to this issue. It's the solution that I've implemented or worked with in other parts of the city. So when Wednesday this came up, the, the parking issue, I talked to the alderman and the alderman's chief of staff and I said, like, look, if you want to compromise or like you want to try to preserve street parking, are, we would agree to say that we're excluded from the ability to get permit parking if you designate this block as permit parking. And the alderman and his chief of staff, Sabah, said that they would be open to putting permit parking at this location. I think the one thing that they, the only concern would be is if it's only three people that want it versus the whole block. But I brought the ordinance here too because I wanted to give it to them to show that you can initiate the permit process by doing your own petition of 65% of the people on the block. So you can do it. And I confirmed with the alderman that he would be open to it if that's what the block wants. I, I respect Mr. Orr's opinion because, but he was talking about the former aldermen. This isn't the current alderman who, they haven't had that discussion. I had it as recently as yesterday. And he said he would because they want this development and they also want to make sure like the residents are happy and we're willing to, we'd set as a concession, we would put ourselves exempt from getting those permits. We'd be willing to put that as a condition in the variation to hold us to it. Cause they were saying as a verbal promise, well, this wouldn't be a verbal promise anymore. It'd be a legally binding limitation.
You said there was a second one also?
Well, the second thing is, you know, we could potentially, after the conversation Wednesday, John did kind of look into this more. And it's, it's not as good for the bike parking, but if he revised the bike parking to make it double stacked instead of single stack spaces, we can get to 10 parking spaces. But that doesn't strike me as something of moving the needle for them.
Condition where the, the residents of this proposed building would be.
Ineligible.
Ineligible to obtain permit parking for the street.
Cause yes, so that's the way we do it is the ordinance gets passed, says who, who's eligible to get the permit parking. And we would not be the ones eligible. It also solves a problem with the church too. They wouldn't be eligible as well. That's why, and I spoke to Mr. Snyder Wednesday night after he sent me an email. And we, we kind of concluded the conversation that we thought that was a win-win if that happens. And we would continue to support them.
And yeah, let's go back. Your thought on this issue about the, a condition that the residents of this proposed building and the church would be ineligible to obtain permit parking on that street?
Yeah, no, I, I, I would still, we would still object. I, I want to say that.
Tell me why.
Well, I don't think you can exclude the church or say that the church can't have parking on Sunday. The permits would be, they would be useless on a Sunday. I would assume that that's the only way the city could do it, right? And if they, if that were the case, then that would only protect us from the church having a, I don't know, a Saturday mass or, or a funeral or, or a wedding or, you know, I don't know, eighth grade celebration or whatever it may have. That's still, it's still a giant issue. I mean, again.
Well, hold, hold on. Let me, let me stop you for a second though, because the, the, the church already exists and people are already parking on Sundays. But tell me about the residents. If the residents of this proposed building were ineligible to obtain permit parking on the street, you're, you would still object to that. Why?
If they were unable to get, to be able to park on Oakwood Boulevard 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days of the year, you would still have 48 minimum or potentially cars that have to go on Vincennes or the third ward side of Oakwood or on, on Langley. It would be a nightmare because we are, it's, it's all owner occupied, small buildings. They're not multiple unit buildings, a bunch of people parking. It's, it's not. We have, there are three fire hydrants on Oakwood which take up parking spaces. There are two handicap parking spaces that take up spaces. There is, there, again, there's, there are the churches. Obviously, if we're saying we can solve for a church, they take up a significant piece of frontage, the churches do. So there, and there are still individually owned, family owned lots that are there that will be developed. They're not, they're not going to be developed as multifamily units. The last development that was done on Oakwood was a, it's a four-story, 4,500 square foot, single family home with an elevator in it. I mean, the place is no joke. This is, this is what Oakwood is. It's not that.
And Mr. Orr, just out of curiosity, because I'm very familiar with the community organization. Is there a reason they did not submit a letter specifically? Cause I know you guys often do submit letters to land use matters. So is there a particular reason that this particular?
This, this is the interesting part. I'm not, I don't know, and I'm, I don't want to, to, to misspeak, but there's a, there's an ordinance, I believe, to some degree that says if you're doing something at an address, you have to tell people within a certain radius, right? Isn't there something along those lines?
Copy of the list that was part of the application.
Okay. So these guys, they're cheating. They, they're across the street. There happens to be the, the only apartment building that's there, but it's like, it's like 12 units and they have their own parking. Next to them is a church. Across the street, there's a, there's a lot that's owned by, or Kitty Corner, there's a lot that's owned by a, Ebony Lucas is the attorney for it, that, that's owned there. And on the other side is the, is the third ward. So they only sent things to these guys' building. They, they never sent stuff to Oakwood Boulevard Neighborhood Association. I never got a thing. None of my neighbors did outside of Uzo who just left. And the only reason the OBNA knows about this is because Uzo told us. Cause he's, happens to be a board, is, happens to be a member. If it weren't for him, we wouldn't be here. And this would have just fell through the cracks. Again, because there, I believe, I don't know, but it sounds like they're trying to split up 545 and 555. Then since the church is never going to build anything on that site, we're never going to have any housing or, they're going to use that to be able to squeeze as much as they can on this footprint. Terrible, terrible, terrible. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but that's what it sounds like.
Thank you. I see we do have a, another person here. Sir, are you, are you hearing objection on this matter? Could you state your name for the record, please?
My name is George Breakmore and I'm.
Can you tell us your address, please?
I don't know if this is necessary.
It's necessary for the record.
Well, well.
Sir?
Sir, I'm a citizen, a legal citizen of the city of Chicago.
Please tell us your address.
For the record. I am a legal citizen of the city of Chicago.
Tell us, tell us your address for the record. Tell us your address for the record, please.
Sir, again, I'm going to emphasize again. I am a legal citizen of the city of Chicago and I have a right to come to this meeting and any meeting that is going on in the city of Chicago. And, and my residence to you and to the other people here. I didn't come down here for that. My, my purpose is far against and I am against this. And I will state my reason. So you put in the record what I am saying.
Yes, I'd like to put in your address for the record, please.
You and I, we're not going to go there.
Sir, hold on, stop. I need you to tell me your address for the record. If you're not going to cooperate, I'm going to have you removed from the chamber.
Listen, this is not removing me, locking me up for not answering this question. I've been coming down here for years and nobody never challenged to, to call the police on me or lock, have me removed because I didn't tell my address. Will you tell them on the board that, that's what, that's one of the necessary criteria?
Sit down.
Okay. Yes, and you.
Sir, provide your address for the record. We need it to send you the resolution.
Listen, listen, we're going, we're going to have to, we're going to have to understand this and we have to do, and maybe God sent me here.
I'm going to give you one last time to give me your address for the record.
Broadway then.
I'm sorry?
804.
804 what?
Broadway.
Okay.
Wherever. 804, this is the address that I have for you, sir.
All right, so you're, so you're not within 250 feet of the property, correct?
Pardon me?
You're not within 250 feet of the property that we're here discussing today. Is that correct?
250 feet of the property.
You do not live within 250 feet of this property that we're discussing today. Is that correct?
I've lived there before. That is correct. I'm, 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 I've lived there. I don't, I don't understand the big issue. I know that you have a criteria.
I'm going to give you two minutes to state your objection on the record.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you very, very much, sir, to understand that we're all working together here. And you almost traumatized me when you said you were going to call the sergeant and throw me out. I'm still a citizen here.
The time is ticking.
And, and I will tell my objection. Oh my God. And, and I will tell my objection. Oh my God. And I will be here. Anyway, my objection, number one, is the size of this building moving into this stable community. And with these 40 tenants, it's ridiculous. It is unacceptable. It's not good public policy. Now, I understand that the developer wants to make money. But he has to consider the residents, the people who live there. And this is why I decided, I've been coming for years, but it's been so much going on in the city of Chicago that I, they just need to clone me. I'm here and there and everywhere. I decided to come down here to the zoning board of appeal and make a statement down here for what's going on. We must share this problem in, in our global city. We must not put one resident against another, one neighborhood against another. We must come together. And I must be welcome and other citizens must be welcome to come to the zoning board of appeal and object or be pro, pro for anything that's going on in this city. So perhaps you're new here. Let me introduce myself to you. My name is George Breakmore and I am a concerned citizen of the city of Chicago. And whatever developing that goes on in this city, I have a concern and thank you, Chairman. And I will be there to object to others.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're done with the objectors and we are now moving back to the applicant for closing.
Yes, I'm going to try to make this brief, but I just want to, because clear up some things that I think Uzo misspoke on, which I don't think is fair. Stacy, you were at the community meeting, correct? And you actually know the Antoinette that Uzo was referencing, correct?
Yes.
Her kids go
Our kids do theater together.
And when she left the meeting, she said she supported our project.
She did. And she also does have her own parking space.
Right.
Parking space.
No, we're, I'm sorry, we're
She was the only person who showed up to the community meeting. The community meeting that was set and requested by the alderman, which, which I was at and everyone here was at.
Okay. Can we? Okay. Can we go back to the aerial really quick, please? So the building that Uzo referenced across the street, that's for sale. It shows us 19 units. The, the lot behind it where you see the cars?
It's a rental building.
It's a rental building for 19 units and
For, for the record, it is a rental building. It is listed for sale.
I do have the sale listing here that shows it unit rental building with no park, the parking lot at the back is city-owned land and it's illegal a parking. And the city allows for it and the residents appreciate it.
Sir, sir, I'm sorry, you're out of order right now. We're with the applicant. They're closing. That's what we're doing right now.
And then I'm just going to, Emmanuel, were you sworn in? I swear Emmanuel in really quickly.
Sir, do you swear affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
State your name for the record.
Emmanuel Byarm and my address is 840 West Black Hall Street.
And you're an attorney at our office?
I'm an associate at Shanbax.
Part of working on this project is you made numerous trips down to this location from our office in the loop, correct?
Seven, to be exact, yes.
And each time you took public transportation?
Correct.
The green line, correct?
Correct, to the Indiana stop.
And public transportation is your normal way of getting around the city, correct?
Correct.
And the trip that you took to this location from the loop using public transportation, that's a normal trip that you take to get anywhere in the city using public transportation?
Correct, about 10, 10, 15 minute trip, you know, normal time.
That's all for that. And then Uzo said, I wanted, there's Uzo, but as soon as he emailed me in December 12th, I answered his questions and offered to talk to him. He never reached out again until Wednesday night when I talked to Mr. Snyder and he said he was going to communicate with everybody and keep in the loop, but that's all I had.
Okay. Any final questions from the board before we take this under advisement? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Page 8624A, 1848 West Kyler. Chairman, also briefly, while we're getting ready, page seven, page number 11024S is being withdrawn.
So what number was that? Okay, 11024S is hereby withdrawn. Okay, we're on, is this 8624A? 1848 West Collier? Okay, would everyone plan to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you. All right, sir, you can begin.
Okay.
And what I want to, what I want to start with is, is, what I want to know is I want you to tell me how the zoning administrator aired.
Correct.
Okay, go ahead.
Right. Did I need to state my name or?
Yeah, state your name for the record, please.
Greg Lamond, 1844 West Kyler. Good morning, Mr. Chamberlain, members of board. I do understand administrative setbacks matters are often straightforward, so I'll try to be brief. I do need to provide some background to our appeal. We bought a house in 2020, or 2012 with abundant sunlight out front to support our garden, which also brightens our front rooms. There was originally a church next door, absolutely no obstruction of sunlight to the front of our home. This appeal was our only in-person forum to voice our objection as there are no other discussions afforded with the new permits. Cannot get our alderman engaged with us on this appeal nor the process for the changes from a church to new residential buildings. We've seen variances approved where the design has been required to be changed. In fact, we would have been supportive of a rear setback variance if the builder wanted to keep the design as is, but moving the front back. I feel the letter notifying us that the setback variance was misleading, representing the front porch in the design. However, what has been presented as the front porch is actually a small stoop for a staircase. The front rooms of the house comes all the way out to the setback, now blocking sunlight to our front room and garden for part of the day. The fact of our appeal is blocking the sunlight to garden and front rooms, the spirit of our, yeah. Okay, yeah, I'm almost in the spirit. So the fact of our appeal is a blocking the sunlight to our garden and front rooms. The spirit of our appeal is a setback that was approved while not supporting the consistency you can see up and down our block. The front porch is lined up to support.
Sorry.
And, yes.
Can you slow down? I'm also having trouble here.
Really? Okay.
Yeah. I heard the part about blocking the lot, but then the front setback part is really
Just slow down a little bit.
Yeah, so the front setback. Right, is, is straightforward. The design blocks the front of the house, blocks the garden, the
That's your, that's your objection, right?
That's our objection and I think
Let me just see if I understand it correctly. Let's try and get to the meat of this right now. You've got a, a street here where you have everybody on one side of your house has a, a front porch. And if you were to look from your porch down the street, you'd be able to see clearly through every other porch on that side. And then on the other side of your house, you're now going to have a, a wall, basically, from the property should should we find that the zoning administrator didn't air? Is that correct?
That is correct.
And is that the, the basis of your objection that it doesn't fit within the character of the neighborhood or?
That's the spirit of our objection. I think the fact is, right, is the blocking of the sunlight.
Okay.
And sir, were you also saying that there, the representation about how that front setback would look was misrepresented on a notice? Is that what you're saying?
In my opinion, it said they wanted to have the setback approved. The design included a front porch. There's no front porch. You step out onto a stoop, walk down the stairs.
Okay. Any other questions from the board before we go to the zoning administrator? All right. Sir, could you state your name and role for the record, please?
Yes, Patrick Murphy with the Department of Planning and Development, the zoning administrator for the city of Chicago.
Okay. And so, so, so tell us why you did not air, or why you think you did not air in granting this administrative adjustment?
Yes. The administrative adjustments are established for lesser degrees of relief than are what can otherwise be sought in, from the zoning board of appeal, typically in the form of variations. Administrative adjustments have specific standards that are relegated to objective criteria, so calculations that can be done. And in the case of this block and this front setback relief, information is submitted for our office to review from the applicant's architect. So it is verifiable as having been done appropriately from a measurement standpoint. We look at that information in comparison to the information on the block. In comparison to the front, in this case, the front setback information on the block and make a mathematical, non-subjective evaluation of whether it meets a mathematical criteria or does not. In this case, there were six properties that were less less set, I'm sorry, yes, less setback from the block, meaning as equally or more egregious than this property and only four, which provided a greater setback. So therefore, the relief this applicant was seeking was in line with what was allowed under the administrative adjustment criteria.
And what about this argument, though, that all of these properties on this block have the open porches that if you, you're on any one of them, you just look down the street and you can see clear through?
So I appreciate that that is an existing element of the properties that are already developed on the block. However, from our standpoint, we don't weigh in on whether someone wants an enclosed area or an open area. The measurements or the building itself is defined as whatever the extent is that exceeds to the front. In this case, the porches that went down the street, this individual was able to provide calculations that showed where their property or where, where their improvement would start was in line with how those calculations would allow. Regardless of what form that encroachment took.
Any other questions for the zoning administrator?
I have a question. The, you are authorized or allowed to grant it if it falls within your objective criteria, but you're not required to. Is that correct?
If it were not to be, well, if an applicant were to have provided evidence that meets the criteria and we were to deny, then the applicant would be in a position to appeal that decision to the zoning board. So we, we can't not make a decision.
No, I know, but, but you're not required to authorize, to authorize.
I wouldn't say we're required to authorize, but I would have to have a reason as to why we would not accept what was submitted as evidence. And nothing that was provided gave us any doubt as to the validity of what they calculated.
Thank you.
So, because one of the, so one of the criteria when you are determining whether to grant an administrative adjustment, and I'm looking at, it's 17-13-1007B. You've got number one, requested administrative adjustment is consisted with consistent with the stated purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. Two, the requested administrative adjustment eliminates an unnecessary inconvenience to the applicant and will have no appreciable adverse impact on the health, safety or general welfare of surrounding property owners or the general public. And three, any adverse impacts resulting from the administrative adjustment will be mitigated to the maximum extent feasible. That is the analysis that you undertake when you're deciding whether to grant an administrative adjustment. Is that correct?
Well, it's, it's in addition, so every administrative adjustment has slightly different criteria. So in the instance of a setback relief criteria, you first have to prove, prove how your, how your request equates to the predominance of the block, the other setbacks, front setbacks in this case. Then once you have that information, correct, then you would go to the, the criteria, the criteria you just listed and analyze based on the information that's provided, based on whatever the proposal is, how does, you know, how would we decide for these particular projects?
And so, and so even, because I'm kind of thinking, I'm looking at number two, I kind of want to focus on number two. Even though this is now going to kind of block, I guess, this this light from the neighboring property and I guess perhaps change what the street looks like, whereas they used to have all these open porches. Now they're going to have one that's enclosed. It's your position that it doesn't have an appreciable adverse impact on the health, safety or general welfare of the surrounding property owners or the general public?
Correct. There are any number of residentially zoned blocks that are fully built out, that have a wide variety of residential properties and a wide variety of front setbacks, none of which are, we would view as on their, on their surface detrimental to the quality of the life next door.
But to follow up on that point, the criteria focused on the surrounding property owners. So not other blocks, but that, right, the specific property that's around the property that you're evaluating. Is that right?
Yes. I was simply saying that this is, it is not unique to have different front, front improvements to a piece of property, residential properties adjacent to each other.
But you do agree that the building of it does limit the light and air that would flow to the surrounding property, correct?
I would not say that it limits the air, certainly. Might it impact some degree of natural light, being that it's to the south? Yes, as a, as a factor of where the sun is and where we are located, but
Isn't that, I mean, I hate to interrupt, but isn't that true for any property that you build that it's going to have some effect on the, on the properties around you?
We live in a very dense urban environment. We have in our zoning code relatively restrictive to the degree they can be setback allowances and trying to acknowledge the fact that the encouragement of residential development, the reuse of property that we have, in this case, the reuse of a former religious facility or new construction. We want to try to be as accommodating to new property development within reason of what would be impacted. And it was not felt that the enclosure of this area, albeit next door to a residential property that has an open porch, was overly detrimental.
Any other questions for the zoning administrator before we go back to the appellant? All right, let's go back to Mr., is it Lamond? All right, so final thoughts from you, you've, you've heard the zoning administrator's response and tell us your, 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 your final closing thoughts.
So I, I appreciate the constraints around the setbacks and, and why they're in place and and I've tried to limit our, our argument, right, to the detriments we have. I think coming to this point in the process versus being engaged in the design, in fact, even before demolition, I spoke with, when I saw the drawing, I spoke with the builder and said, you know, it is going to block the sunlight. He said, we have a small lot, which we all have small lots. This is the only way to get the house built as is. I said, I suggested a rear setback variance be approved and we would not actually object to that. Where, yes, it would reduce the open area in the back, but keep the, the front, you know, with the sunlight inconsistent with our community. And that was mentioned that, you know, it's too late in the process for that. So I don't know how we went from zero to here without being involved in the process. So our, our case really is against, you know, the, the rule of the setback variance.
Any final questions from the board?
I got one question for an administrator. How often do you grant administrative adjustments?
I, I, sorry, I don't have that number off the top of my head. I can, I can get it for the board before your deliberations. I can give you the last couple of I can give you the last couple of years.
Right, I just want to, you do this a lot.
Multiple hundreds, multiple hundred administrative adjustments are filed a year. I don't know what the approval versus denial percentage is.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you both for your time. All right, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much, sir. We are now on, well, could you state your name for the record, please? Okay, and your address?
Property address is twenty-six fifty-two, twenty-six fifty-eight North Wilton. They're joining properties for this proposed construction.
Okay, and this is another appeal. Tell us why you believe the zoning administrator erred.
I believe the zoning administrator erred because there is access from the rear of this property. Although it would probably require some granting of egress from me, there is the ability to get a car from the rear of the property. That is my main contention is that there is access from the rear and that there, the other thing is that there is no properties on this block or even in the vicinity that have a front-facing garage and driveway on the street side.
So the question I had for you when I was looking at this one is, so if we go back to the photo that shows the, the, yes, this, this one with the, with the L, the, the property that we're talking about is to the, is to the left of the white SUV. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
So isn't the, the structure of the L right behind that property?
It is. I did, I do have some exhibits, if I can give them to you, that have some further pictures.
Sure. Okay, so I, I'm looking at your photos. Does the zoning administrator have a copy of these as well?
I do. I have, I took the file. Uh, sorry, Patrick Murphy, Department of Planning. But I just have one question, though, about the appeal.
Sure.
The appeal that was filed was based, was for an objection to not receiving notice. It wasn't for, I, I, driveway, I'm sorry, I don't even know what like what the concern about, from the driveway standpoint is in the rear.
Okay, I, I mean, I, the appeal was for the, the parking issue. I had made a contention that I never got notice on this for either property on either side, but that really wasn't part of my appeal. I was, I was upset about it, but I didn't, it wasn't really something. I was told it wasn't going to make a difference one way or the other, to be honest.
Okay. Well, could I ask for a slight continuance so I could at least look through this from that standpoint? Because I was preparing in anticipation of an objection related to appeal, or really related to notice.
A continuance, what would you say?
Later this morning, if I could just briefly, if you could do a few cases.
Sure. Yes. We'll grant a continuance. What do you, how much time do you want?
Maybe just ten minutes.
Ten minutes.
Let me, if I can't resolve it in ten minutes, then I'll let you know.
Okay, all right. We'll call a couple of other.
May I ask if he can see those pictures, too?
I have.
He's got them.
Okay.
So, all right, so we're going to hear a couple of other cases. We'll continue this one and we'll hear it in another ten, fifteen minutes or so. All right, sir, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Jaime Rodriguez, eighteen forty-nine West Chicago Avenue.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, sir.
All right, before we begin, we're going to go to Nancy Razovich. Nancy, could you state your name and role, please?
My name is Nancy Razovich. I'm an assistant commissioner with the zoning bureau in the Department of Planning and Development.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Please go ahead and read the department's recommendation.
The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed barber shop. The department finds that this proposal complies with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of public convenience, and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the barber shop will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design and operating characteristics. Lastly, the proposed barber shop is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Okay, so you're here to open up a barber shop?
Yes, sir.
And tell us a little bit about your experience in, in barber shop business.
My experience is, man, it's a long story, but my experience is, it's been amazing.
Well, let me ask you this. How long have you, you're a licensed cosmetologist or a licensed barber?
Oh, cosmetologist.
And for how long?
I've been since two thousand fifteen.
Okay, so you've been a licensed cosmetologist for the last eight years or nine years? Is that a yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just want to get it for the record. Is this going to be your first barber shop that you're opening on your own?
Yes, it would be. We actually been at this location before. We're just trying to switch the, the business license name.
Oh, okay.
It's been there since two thousand fifteen as well.
Okay, so you've, you've been at this location, but what, the business license is switching to your name?
Yes.
Okay. And what are the hours that you keep at the location?
From ten to seven, ten AM to seven PM.
Is that every day?
Except Sunday, Mondays.
And how many employees do you have?
Seven. We'll be adding three more stations.
Okay, and all licensed cosmetologists?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. Nancy, do you want to go ahead and read the department's recommendation?
Yes. This is for calendar number eighty-nine twenty-four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon. The department finds that the proposal complies with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of public convenience, and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the hair salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design and operating characteristics. Lastly, the proposed hair salon is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Thank you. Could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Michelle DeCoste, two hundred East Illinois Street, Unit twelve oh one.
And you're here to open up a salon?
We are, yes.
And is this salon, is it, are you just changing locations? Is that what's happening?
Correct, yeah. And we're just a two-person hair boutique. It's really just me and Siobhan, which is the co-owner, and we have no employees.
Okay, both licensed cosmetologists?
Correct.
How long have you been licensed?
Since two thousand eighteen.
Okay. And what are the hours that you intend on keeping?
Nine to five, Tuesday through Saturday.
Okay. Any questions from the board? We'll take this under advisement. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Nancy, do you want to go ahead and read the department's recommendation?
I will. This is for calendar number ninety twenty-four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon. The department finds that this proposal complies with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of public convenience, and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the hair salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design and operating characteristics. Lastly, the proposed hair salon is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Okay, who wants to talk first?
I'll talk first.
All right, could you tell us your name and address, please?
Chantel Williams, sixteen fifty West Ogden.
Okay, and you're here to open up a salon?
Yes.
Okay, and can you tell us about your experience in the salon business?
I had my license since two thousand ten. I received my license from Chicago, City of Chicago College Truman, on College up north. This is my third salon, well, will be my third salon working, but my first salon business. I've dedicated that to kids with hair loss, clients with hair loss. And I also work for the City of Chicago CPS, Special Education Department.
And what are the hours that you intend on keeping?
Seven AM to seven PM, Tuesday through Saturday.
And how many employees do you intend on having?
Seven.
Seven, all to, to cut hair? So they'll all be licensed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and let's get your name and address, please?
My name is Mary Alatouji, sixteen fifty West Ogden Avenue.
Okay, and are the two of you business partners?
Yes.
Okay, and you're a licensed cosmetologist as well?
Yes, we went to the same school.
Okay, graduating two thousand ten? Okay. Any questions from the board? We'll take it under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, sir, could you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Nancy, do you want to go ahead and read the department's recommendation?
Yes, this is for calendar number ninety-one twenty-four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair and nail salon suites. The department finds that this proposal complies with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of public convenience, and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the hair and nail salons, late suites, will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design and operating characteristics. Lastly, the proposed hair and nail salon suites are designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Okay, sir, could you state your name and address, please?
My name, Eric Jordan, fifty-seven forty-four West Erden Park Road.
Okay, and you're here to open up some salon suites?
Yes.
And if I understood the application correctly, you're just planning on leasing them out to licensed cosmetologists?
Yes.
You, you yourself are not a licensed cosmetologist, correct? So you're just basically going to be the landlord?
Yes.
When you do this, are you going to ensure that the, to the extent you're, you're renting out to a, to a, to a barber or a stylist, that they have a license in cosmetology?
Yes.
Okay. Are you going to have them keep certain hours at the salon suites?
Yes, it's from nine to five.
Okay, so that'll be the time that they can operate within? Okay. Any, well, straight, have you, have you ever done this before? Have you ever rented out salon suites before?
No, this is my first time.
First time? Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so we're back. Mr. Murphy, you had, you had some time to go through what the appeal is about? Okay, and you're ready to proceed now? Okay. So before we, before we get to the zoning administrator, I, I want to get back to this question that I have about, about the, the back of this property. And I did look at your photos, too, that you submitted, but to me, it still seems you couldn't have, even the photos that you show have, you can fit a car back there, but you got to do it on an angle.
Right.
Right? I mean, there's no, there's no coming straight out, like some of the other properties that we see that have a driveway in the back that goes straight out into the open space under the L. You couldn't do that with this property that we're talking about, fair?
You can't do a straight driveway.
Okay. Okay. And so, just to recap, why is it that you think the zoning administrator erred?
I, when I talked to the alderman's office, they said that they have had situations where if the neighbor next door was working with the person that was buying the property and they were willing to allow an egress on their property, that situations have arisen where they came to an agreement and that was allowed. I understand with this property, you know, somebody coming in there is going to have to property, either come across a foot or two of the property line at times, on my property line, to get access in there. There's still, that truck that's going through there is eighty-two inches wise. It's a full-size truck that is going through in the picture. There's still room on either side of that to get through. And comparable to the address I showed you, the twenty-seven oh eight address that has twenty-seven oh eight North Wilton, which is literally four houses to the north of this property, it has the same dimension of width of access, one hundred and twenty-eight inches wide to get in there. And there's a similar obstruction with the alley platforms behind there. And that, too, has a difficult angle, obviously, to get into those spots, but it is there, and there is a driveway underneath there for that property. Typically, the, the property that, since I've been at either of these properties since two thousand two and two thousand three, the rear of the properties have always been accessible. um, the rear of the properties have always been accessible, um, to people driving in and out of it. I mean, if they had access to their units or their, their building or their, uh, property. There's a property in 2654 that's a newer construction that also has a driveway that is from the rear. I'm assuming that had to get permission because that was an empty lot before that was built. So there was some kind of permission granted to get access from the alley into that property for two rear garages, which is similar to what, um, I would, I would hope to get for this property 2654. The, the, the other main issues that I brought up were basically regarding, um, this is nowhere near the, the neighborhood. There's nothing that has a garage and a entrance like this anywhere around that area, especially on that block. There's not one. So this would be the first property with a garage on the front of the property facing the street. This is a high-traffic area. There's, uh, the dog park is right behind there. The Piggly, uh, I mean, uh, Wiggly Field Dog Park is right there. There's a church. There's always a lot of traffic coming in and out of there. If you look at the picture I, I enclosed with a car reversing out of there, it's going to come, and I, I know there is ordinances in terms of how close a driveway can be to an intersection. I think this meets the clearance. I think it's something like 25 feet. But it's still going to be extremely close to cars entering that intersection from a right turn, left turn, and it's going, they're going to be blinded because there's still going to be a car on that corner that's going to block their line of sight coming and going. So in terms of access, to me, this is a property that I'm willing to offer anything to make this happen. Um, I think it would help the neighborhood a lot. It would allow parking in front of this building that is desperately needed in that area, especially with the transient traffic going to the dog park. People come, they park, they double park, they park in front of driveways. So there is already a lot of parking issues in that area. This, to me, would only add to that issue of, uh, not enough parking in that area. Typically, all the buildings, most of the buildings along the L tracks are, a lot of them are, um, are, are multi-unit buildings with tenants in them. There is a lot of traffic coming and going. My property either side has tenants coming and going. So right when they walk out the door, there's going to be a driveway now with a car exiting. So the pathway of traffic along that sidewalk, sidewalk with these front-facing buildings that have, typically, most of them have a walk-up, and they're very close to the sidewalk. This would be a setback with a driveway in the rear. To me, it's, it's unprecedented in the neighborhood. I know myself, I had the property next door, this is probably 12 years ago, I asked to get a curb cut to get an access to allow more access on the front, and I was told there is no, no curb cuts allowed in that area, period, by the alderman's office. And it was basically shut down. They said, "Don't even waste your time. It's never going to happen." I understand this is a complex property, but it seems that there is already one property existing within a close range that has a very similar restriction, so I don't know why it couldn't be explored, or somebody could tell me why it can't be explored, um, if I'm working alongside with whatever they need to get access to that property.
Okay. Any questions for the appellant before we go to the zoning administrator? Let's go to the zoning administrator. Mr. Murphy, if you could, uh, respond to the appellant's, uh, claims?
Sure. Uh, Patrick Murphy with the Department of Planning and Development, um, the city's, uh, zoning administrator. Yes, you are correct. There can be instances where private parties can negotiate easements or other rights of access in perpetuity as it relates to driveways. However, as is depicted in the picture, and as is done or allowed pursuant to the municipal code, uh, specifically under Section 17 dash 2, dash 0402, Section A, Paragraph or Statement 1. In all our districts, residential districts, all off-street parking must be accessed off the abutting alley except when direct access to off-street parking is allowed in the following cases: when the subject zoning lot lacks access to an improved alley. So given the conditions of the property, we do not require applicants to make arrangements with neighbors or other parties. They are able to proceed with the installation of a driveway by right, and that's what was done in this case.
Right, so the, y, y, you can't compel the, the property owner to negotiate an easement with the neighbor?
Correct.
Okay. Any, um, questions for the zoning administrator?
I guess I just have the question of, um, if there was an easement that was allowed from the adjoining property, would the zoning administrator have any issue with that setup?
No, provided that it gave, uh, for residential purposes, access in perpetuity, and it was large enough to accommodate vehicles that we would otherwise have for driveway and parking purposes, then, no, we, we could accept that.
And do the photos that have been provided, have you had a chance to review those?
I did look through the photos.
And what, what do you, what is your reaction to the size of the access that's reflected there?
I'm, so, I'm, I'm not certain that someone would agree to that angled access, uh, if it could physically work for them. Uh, they're welcome, I mean, they're still welcome to go ahead and negotiate separately and revise their permit. Uh, but we would not, uh, you know, we would, we would take into account whatever they agree to, examine it for measurement purposes to make sure it is functional and meets the requirements of the code for parking otherwise. And then if they agree as private parties to do that, then so be it.
Any other questions for the zoning administrator? Let's go back to, uh, the appellant, uh, for closing thoughts.
Uh, my question would be is if, if I was allowed at the preliminary adjustment hearing, would the course of action be if there was an objection at that time and it was granted my objection, would there be a chance where you would ever suggest that, hey, could you guys see if you can work out an option here in terms of a rear entry point?
I mean, we would always encourage neighbors to discuss whatever the improvements are and try to work their way through peacefully and civilly with whatever the disputes are, parking setbacks, whatever it may be. We would not, could not withhold this person's permit if you were unable to come to an agreement.
Okay. Is there still a process that would allow that to happen where?
Well, as the zoning administrator just said, I mean, nothing prevents you from reaching out to the property owner and seeing if even, you know, even if we were to uphold the zoning administrator's decision, you know, would you agree to an easement in perpetuity instead of pursuing this? You know, as the zoning administrator just said, you, you could still try and negotiate that and then revise the permit. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, in, in terms of this, in terms of the, the, what it's doing to the neighborhood in terms of a visual, is there anything in those contentions in terms of redesigning this in some way? I don't know exactly how that would be. Where that you don't have this dominant presence of a garage on the front of this property, which is non-existent in that neighborhood?
Well, so he, he's got this, uh, the, the objection, as I hear it, is, you know, it's out of character for the neighborhood to have, uh, a, a garage in the, in the front, in a, in a, uh, in a driveway in the front. And what's your response to that?
There are a lot of situations throughout the city that are unique and don't allow for a, a, a uniform application of the rules that we have. And because we want to see these properties developed, we had to work with city council over the years to come up with avenues for properties to still be developed, taking into account things that would otherwise not be a problem on a typical piece of property. Were you to, again, negotiate more with the applicant versus, uh, you know, in regards to how this improvement looks in light of the obstruction in the rear? Again, that's, you're perfectly capable of doing that, but we would not prevent them from proceeding based on what they proposed.
Is, is, um, is a question to you, to you, is that, does it sound like, I mean, I'm just, I know you have to make a decision, but is there anything along the lines of what you're seeing that seems like, um, this is out of the ordinary, or is this common in terms of a property like this in a neighborhood where it's never had, you know, this property sold for a lower rate than what the properties across the street would, with the issue of the access behind it, and now it's being developed? I understa, I'm all for development in the area, but there was limitations on this property, and that's why it sat for years, um, at a very high price, and then came down to a very low price to sell, um, because of that reason. I'm sure many people explored this option and realized that the same problem was access.
I mean, we're not here to, um, you know, answer the appellant's questions. We're going to listen to your case, and then we're going to deliberate.
Gotcha. Okay.
Uh, anything else?
I think that's it.
Okay. Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you. Before we, um, before we take this case, um, I move that we just take a five-minute recess. Commissioner McDonald seconds. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks-Secondes, Commissioner McDonald. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes, and we're back, and we are now on calendar number ninety-two twenty-four S. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much, I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number ninety-two twenty-four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed nail salon. Counselor, you may proceed.
Good morning, may I please the board, Mr. Chairman, my name is Ninma, I'm the attorney for the applicant, Mr. Hung Nguyen. To his left, we are joined by Mr. John Ubrich, he is a real estate appraiser. We are applying for a special use permit to operate a nail salon within a thousand feet of other salon licensees.
Let me just jump, let me jump in right now, from the findings of fact, if I understood it correctly, the applicant's been operating nail salon for decades?
Correct.
Okay, and really what happened was the license lapsed, and now you're just trying to bring it back into compliance?
That's correct.
Okay.
There was also a move within the same building, two units down.
Okay, and both of your witnesses, sir, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
John Europek, eighty-five forty-six Thistlewood Court in Derry, Illinois. I'm a real estate appraiser.
Okay, and could you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Hung Nguyen, and my salon is thirty-two oh nine West one hundred eleventh Street.
Okay, and both of you prepared affidavits in this case, is that correct?
Correct.
And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistent with those affidavits?
Yes.
Okay, all right, does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Okay, let's go to Mr. Blakemore, can you state your name and address for the record, please? Oh, sir, if you can put the microphone to your mouth, so that...
Thank, thank you, sir, thank you very much. My name is George Blakemore, and I live at thirteen forty-seven North Dearborn. Thank you very much.
Okay. Go ahead with your objection, I'm gonna give you three minutes for your objection.
Yes, my objection, and I'm also going to make a statement. I'm wanting to know the demographic of that neighborhood, and I'm wanting to know how many people would be employed there, and what, what is the ethnicity of these people that's been employed? Now, I can ask these questions, this is not a question and answer session, however, I have a right to make a statement and ask these questions, because this gentleman now is coming to this body zoning board of appeal, evidently the, the first process didn't work, so he decided to come to the zoning board of appeal. Now, I'm, I'm wanting to know if he has received any type of, of community input from the, the aldermen, or the people in the community establishing, moving back. I, I heard that, I was listening, and he said he left, and he's wanting to open it up again. That's why it's very important for us to educate our, our people about the process, the zoning board of appeal, what happened in the zoning board, evidently it wasn't favorable to you, so you decide to come and, and appeal this. So, again, hopefully, I will be able to get some information about what transpired, and maybe these questions that I'm asking the gentleman, and the statement that I made, I'm wanting to know how many employees, and what is the ethnicity of these employees, and do these employees live in the area where he's opening up that establishment? So we, I'm not anti-job, I want people have to work, but I wanna make sure that people that look like me are working, so this is why it's very important for me to come to these meetings, I wish I could clone myself and go to all of them. So, again, I made my statement, and maybe legally mandated, you all don't have to address these issues that I brought up, but I brought these issues up, and I'm totally against this until these questions are answered, but you have the power to, to override my issues, so that's not in question, and thank you.
Okay. Let's go back to the applicant, how many employees do you have?
Two.
Two, and those are licensed nail techs?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, you, you said, you said you were, how long have you been in the community?
Twenty-three years.
Twenty-three?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement.
Thank you.
From the local alderman.
Oh, sure.
I don't know if we've gone over this, but I'd like to ask Mr. Burbek a few questions.
Sir, sir, the, the...
The affidavits.
Yeah, the affidavits are in the record.
Okay.
Nothing further is needed, and there's no questions from the board, the, the letter from alderman, from the alderman is, is in our, is in our file, and we'll take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, we do.
Thank you very much, for the record, Joe Ryan's expertise is recognized, and let me go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number ninety-three twenty-four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed gas station with a new convenience store, provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Marine Drive Business, Inc., and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated March fourteen, twenty twenty-four, prepared by Antonio Faneza, LTD. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Mark Kupiak. Excuse me, I should have brought a glass of water. I represent the applicant, and I have with me today, as part of our team, seated next to me, Akil Jadi, who is the gas station manager of the current gas station. Next to him is Mrs. Share Eli, who is the president and sole stockholder of the applicant corporation. Next to her, we have Antonio Faneza, who is our project architect, and next to him, Joe Ryan, our expert witness. And briefly, we have, excuse me again, we have an old gas station, maybe forty years old, built before the city had a twenty thousand square foot site requirement, and also built with an old kiosk, which was the fashion back in the day. Also had, had a car wash, and still has a car wash building. So the current plan, the kiosk is old and too small for modern standards, and the plan is to demolish this existing car wash building and build a new convenience store building roughly in the same spot as the car wash building, and that is the plan. So with that, I think I'll go to our witnesses. Akil, would you, into microphone, state your name and your address?
My name is Akil Jadi, seven nine one three, North Nautica Avenue, Niles, Illinois, and I'm the gas station operations and finance manager.
Akil, in your judgment, would you guess that the existing gas station might be forty years old?
Yeah, it is there since passport years, but we have been the owner since two thousand seventeen.
Good, and is true the gas station now currently operates out of that kiosk?
Yeah, it's a small kiosk.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
Good, and Akil, also true this kiosk is old and small and not up to modern standards?
Correct.
And the plan is to replace it with a convenience store?
That's correct.
Akil, did you sign, actually two affidavits in connection with this case, one for the special use, one for the variation?
Yes, I did.
And if I continue to question you, would your answers be consistent with those affidavits?
Yes, I would.
Akil, is it also true that you did some community outreach, and you met with the Lakeside Area Neighbors Association?
Yes.
And did you also meet with the Uptown United and Uptown Chamber of Commerce?
Yes.
You explained the project, and they did not voice any objection?
That is correct.
Okay, that's all I have of Akil. Next witness, I'll call Antonio Fanezi, Fanezy, Faneza. I'm sorry, Antonio, your name and address?
What's the correct pronunciation?
I'm sorry?
What's the correct pronunciation?
Well, which one would you like? Anyway, my name is Antonio Faneza, and that's twenty, no, I'm also confused, but anyway, the architect of record, twenty-three sixty-three Lashner Lane, Des Plaines, Illinois.
Good, and Antonio, you're the project architect?
Yes, the architect of record, yes.
Good, and on behalf of the applicant, you worked through the intake process?
Yes.
And you also signed affidavits in connection with these cases here today?
Yes, I did, I have signed affidavits, actually.
Good, if I continue to question you, would your answers be consistent with those affidavits?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Joe Ryan, name and address, occupation?
Joseph M. Ryan, MAI, President LaSalle Appraisal Group with offices at ninety-four fifty-five South Horn Avenue in Chicago.
Good, Joe, did you prepare a, a report in connection with this case today?
I did.
And your resume with your qualifications are in that report?
They are.
And Joe, in your opinion, does this proposed special use meet all the applicable standards of the ordinance?
Yes.
Also true that this special use to build this new convenience store as part of this existing gas station will not have an adverse effect on the general welfare of the neighborhood?
None whatsoever.
Good, if I continue to question you, would your answers be consistent with your written report?
Yes.
And that written report's been submitted, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Mrs. Eli was here, just because she's the president of the corporation, but I think the evidence is already in the...
Agreed. Thank you.
Page number one oh two twenty-four Z, one oh three twenty-four Z, one oh four twenty-four Z, five thirty, West Fullerton Parkway.
All right, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much, Counselor, you can proceed, Alderman, do you wanna speak last? Okay, okay.
Thank you, my name for the record is Thomas S. Moore, and will you tell the board who you are?
Willie Cade, W Y L L I E C A D E, Junior Warden, seen at Church of Our Savior, Chicago.
And what's your relationship to the Church of Our Savior?
I am the junior warden, also a parishioner for the last forty years.
And junior warden is like a pastor or assistant pastor?
No, it's the president-elect of the council.
Okay, and this, the purpose of this is for variances for the, to redo the eighteen-eighties building in the back of the church, is that right?
Correct, it's a replacement of the parish hall.
And that, that building actually was the original Presbyterian church, which later built down the block, is that right?
That is correct.
And then your, or your congregation took over when the Presbyterian church moved down the block, took over that building, and that was your church for some years?
It was, indeed.
And then you built the Graystone Church, that's a landmark now, in front of it?
Correct.
But you still use it as your assembly hall for your social service agencies and for all sorts of purposes, is that right?
That is correct.
And it's, it's an eighteen-eighties building, and it's really down in the tooth, and it really, you need to replace it, is that right?
That is correct, and we've been encouraged by city officials, particularly the fire department, to do that.
Okay, and so you've been through a community meeting with Park West, which is the local community, and also Mid-North, which is across Fullerton, and both of them have approved it, is that right?
That is correct.
And you and I worked out an affidavit where we addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance, and if you were to continue to testify, you testified consistently with it, is that right?
That is correct.
That's all we have.
Great, and I see that we have the alderman here, Alderman, could you state your name and role, please?
Timmy Knudsen, forty-third ward alderman.
And tell us why you're here.
Great, I'm here, you know, it's a string of variations, but it is something that has a use that once upon a time probably needed a special use, we're really enthusiastic about this project, because what it's gonna do is not only strengthen the church, Church of Our Savior, but it's gonna become a new home for Care for Friends, the amazing nonprofit, and it, you know, speaking with Hope in the Back, who runs Care for Friends, this central...
She's raising her hand.
Back there, this, this central location is going to really allow the group to do grocery delivery across the city. Right now, their temporary location is up in Edgewater, and it makes it a little more difficult to go citywide. They also just offer, you know, daily services, hot meals, there's clinics coming in related to healthcare, and really looking at how we service our homeless community holistically. We're very enthusiastic about the project, the state senator, Sarah Feigenholz, was able to advocate for a good amount of, of funding for the project, and for us who, you know, our office is adjacent to Fullerton, Fullerton has just become a really great strip for progressive-minded churches. Outside of this project, I'll brag about Fullerton... Outside of this project, I'll brag about Fullerton, that churches are housing new arrival families, churches are consistently offering just human services, and we couldn't be more excited with that strengthening through this not-small project, in the end, ten million dollars or so project. So it has our strong support, as Tom noted. It also has the support of the neighborhood associations, and there is a letter on file from Park West, which is the neighborhood association with jurisdiction over this property.
Yes, and we do have that in the record. Thank you very much for your comments. Are there any questions from the board? Sounds like a, like a great, like, like it's, it sounds like a very good operation you've got. We'll take it under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Clarity if I may?
Sure.
Nine point two million, not ten.
Okay.
Case number ninety-five twenty-four S, ninety-six twenty-four Z, ninety-seven twenty-four G, sixty-sixty-eight West Ogden.
Okay, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. The board recognizes Mr. Musawir's expertise. I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number ninety-five twenty-four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a community center, provided, one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Revive Center for Housing and Healing; two, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the site plan, landscape plan, proposed first floor plan, exterior elevations A two hundred and A two oh one dated March fourteen, twenty twenty-four, the typical floor plan dated May two, twenty twenty-three, and existing basement plan dated October twenty, twenty twenty-two, all prepared by Design Bridge; and, three, the applicant provides a copy of the Cross Access Easement Agreement for the shared parking area to the northeast of the building prior to the issuance of any building permits. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you. Good, good morning still, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Rich Toll. I'm an attorney with offices at twenty South Clark Street in Chicago, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Revive Center for Housing and Healing. We do have three combined applications for the property at sixteen sixty-eight West Ogden, primarily for a community center for an existing building, but also for parking and bicycle space reductions. The property is in a B three dash three zoning district. It's very irregularly shaped, almost V-shaped. It's approximately sixteen thousand four hundred square feet in area, and again, contains an existing building that will remain and continue to be used. The site also qualifies as a transit-served location. The applicant has been at the property for over fifty years. The applicant is a not-for-profit corporation that serves homeless individuals, and the community center will be a continuation of that longstanding mission. We did receive those comments and made several accommodations, the suggestion and good ideas of the Department of Planning and Development. We thank them for their assistance. We have initiated a building permit application, but of course, we need the approvals that we're seeking here today. I have with me the applicant's acting executive director, Erwin Mayer, its director of programs, Andrea LeFleur, also our architect, Gabriel Ignacio Jagovic, and also land use consultant, as you mentioned, Kareem Musawir, as an expert witness. If permitted, I'd like to start with Mr. Mayer as the applicant's first witness. Can you please state your name and spell your last name?
My name is Erwin Mayer, M A Y E R.
Your business address is our property address, and you're the acting executive director, is that correct?
Yes.
You're familiar with the property, the surrounding area, the proposed operations, and the uses, is that correct?
Yes.
You just heard me describing the property, the applicant and the proposed business. Was everything that I said accurate?
Yes.
And you are a not-for-profit corporation and a five oh one C three charitable organization, is that right?
Yes.
And the organization has been in existence for over one hundred years in Chicago, is that correct?
Yes.
Can you briefly outline the history of the organization?
Yes, the organization was founded in nineteen fifteen as Cathedral Shelter of Chicago. It was started by Reverend Gibson, who was an Episcopal priest and part of the Episcopal Diocese of Chicago. He was a supreme advocate for immigrants and the poor on the west side. Organization was originally housed in the cathedrals of Saint Peter and Paul at Washington and Peoria Streets, eventually moved to the Church of the Epiphany on Ashland, and then to our current location at sixteen sixty-eight West Ogden at Revive. Reverend Higgins joined Cathedral Shelter back in nineteen twenty-nine, right as the Great Depression began and the work of providing shelter and food and housing and jobs, to the extent they were available, expanded greatly. Reverend Higgins also started the first halfway house for people experiencing alcohol use issues called Higgins House at the Church of the Epiphany way back in nineteen fifty-eight, and Revive Center for Housing Healing became our name in two thousand thirteen to better reflect the work we are currently doing.
And the focus is on homeless individuals, is that correct?
Yes. Our mission at Revive is to seek and end homelessness and restore hope that all might flourish. We actualize that mission by providing units of affordable housing for individuals who would otherwise be unhoused or who are at risk of homelessness, and goal-driven supportive services and persistent engagement to help get and keep individuals and families stably housed. These services help provide our clients, help our clients address their individual barriers to stable housing, improve health and economic stability.
Does Chicago have a need for such services?
Yes, sir. The two thousand twenty-three Chicago Point in Time Count identified over six thousand one hundred and thirty-nine individuals experiencing homelessness, of which roughly five hundred, or five thousand one hundred and fifty reside in homeless shelters, and another thousand reside on the streets. Chicago Coalition for the Homeless in its most recent report estimates that there's sixty-eight thousand four hundred and forty individuals experiencing homelessness in its most recent report back in two thousand twenty-one, when you consider people who are staying with others and doubling them.
And we're seeing more and more of that in the news every day, I think. We're here to discuss the property on Ogden. The organization owns the building, is that correct? How long has it been there?
Yes, Revive has been at that address since approximately nineteen seventy.
And not the focus of our hearing today, but you do provide units of, of, in layman's terms, affordable housing for individuals who are at risk of being unhoused, is that correct?
Yes, sir. We provide twenty-eight apartments on the upper two floors of the building. That's comprised of eighteen studios, eight one-bedroom, and two two-bedroom apartments.
And just very briefly, is that housing successful?
Yes.
But we're here today to discuss the engagement center activities on the ground floor, is that right?
Yes.
And is that something available to both building residents and outside visitors?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I can have your latitude, I wanted to give you the best explanation. I want to jump to our second witness, but I'll come back to Mr. Mayer.
Please.
Our director of programs, Andrea, could you please state your name and spell your last name?
Andrea LeFleur, L E F L O R E.
Your business address is our subject property address, and you're the director of programs at Revive?
Correct.
What's your education in terms of this type of work?
I have a doctorate in occupational therapy.
Okay, could you tell us about the engagement center's role, the role it plays?
Revive has new people walking into the office every day asking for help, and the engagement center is a place that offers a warm place with coffee and food and resources, dignity and respect to all people that walk in. It offers wraparound services, including case management, clinical services, occupational therapy. We have medical services on site, or will have medical services twice per week with Rush Center to transform health and housing. They offer doctor, nurse, social work, community health worker. In addition, family guidance centers can provide substance use counseling on site once or twice per week. And then we have daily groups, including mental health services, other life skills programs, book clubs, mindfulness groups, recovery-oriented services, music groups, spiritual care, and overall a sense of belonging. It'll also have drop-in clinics, including services with our community partners to offer cancer screenings, vision clinics and free eyeglasses and exams for residents and for community members, vaccine clinics, mental health screening, suicide prevention, harm reduction programming, and the expert services of Rush Occupational Therapy, other local university organizations for gaining skills to help people accomplish their goals, and also twelve-step meetings, Narcotics Anonymous and Alcoholics Anonymous.
Thank you for that explanation, and thank you for your work. I know this is your baby. Mr. Mayer, again, because those services that Dr. LeFleur just described will be available to non-residents, a special use for a community center is required, is that correct?
Yes, that is my understanding.
And reinforcing what you mentioned earlier, there's a community need for those specific services?
Yes.
And having operated for over one hundred years in the Chicago area, or in Chicago, Revive has developed expertise and experience in successfully providing those services?
Yes.
And being a good and respectful neighbor, is that correct?
Yes.
And while many of those services grew organically at the site over time, the need for a special use was identified because of planned rehabilitation work at the property, is that right?
Yes.
Can you tell us a little bit about that?
We were very fortunate to receive funding from the Illinois Housing Development Authority to renovate extensively the property known as Crissy House. The renovation will include renovating all of the apartments with new kitchens and bathrooms and energy-efficient appliances. There will be new windows, new lighting, new water-conserving plumbing fixtures, energy-efficient HVAC equipment, and the elevator will be modernized, which will also make the fire department very happy. The engagement center will be reconfigured to provide new case management and occupational therapy spaces, respite areas, a community kitchen, and bathrooms and laundry facilities to serve the unhoused individuals. The cost of the renovation in new funding is expected to exceed seven million dollars, which will be paid for largely by new IDA grant funds and a million point one five contribution from Revive in the way of donations and equity that Revive is contributing. And the Chicago Department of Housing has been supportive of this effort as well.
And the permit applications for the planned rehab work have helped identify the need for the approvals we're pursuing here today? Is that correct?
Yes.
For example, although the parking lot layout has not changed in our institutional memory, the substantial investment in rehabilitation work will trigger compliance with new parking requirements, and we're just seeking to have approvals to keep it at what we have now and what we've had for many years, is that correct?
That is my understanding.
And although the, there'll be rehab work, of course, but there's no material exterior alterations to the property or to access or anything like that, is that correct?
Yes.
What are the hours going to be?
The hours of the engagement center will be between nine AM and five PM, Monday through Saturday. Occasionally, there may be some hours that extend to seven, to seven PM in the evening to provide services after hours.
Okay, and again, we are seeking reductions in the bicycle and parking space requirements. Does your clientele have a high demand for those types of things?
Generally, no. The, the population that we serve is very low-income, very few of any of our participants have a vehicle, and very few have access to bicycles as well.
Counselor, if I could just jump in, you, you, you've got a, a, a good submission here. You've got good findings of fact. If you could have your applicants swear to their affidavits?
I will. Mr. Mayer, you graciously provided an affidavit that we submitted in support of this application. Was that accurate and does it remain accurate?
Yes.
And have called upon to testify further, would you testify in accordance with that affidavit?
Yes.
Unless there are questions, I'll proceed to our architect. Could you please state your name and spell your last name?
Ignacio Jagovic. Last name is D. Like David, Z. Like Zebra, I E K I E W I C Z.
Just, just talk slow. We got a court reporter here.
It's a long one, so I tried to rush it.
You, you found that in terms of building design and fitting into the neighborhood that we, the, the site generally conforms and is in accordance with the rest of the neighborhood in terms of design and operations, is that correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Your office was kind enough to provide an affidavit that we submitted in support of this application, and that affidavit is accurate and remains accurate, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And have called upon to testify further, would you testify in accordance with that affidavit?
Yes, I would.
If there's no questions, I'll proceed to our expert witness, Kareem.
Sir.
You've recognized him as an expert. He has submitted a report. I'll just say, can you, does your report indicate that the, your professional opinion is that the site meets the criteria for a special use?
Yes, it does.
And although the report doesn't focus on the variations, you were, you've evaluated the requested value, variations, and is it your professional opinion that we meet the criteria for those approvals as well?
Yes, sir.
You have called upon to testify further, would you testify in accordance with your report?
I would, sure.
Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Sounds like another great project. We'll take it under advisement.
Thank you.
Next case, ninety-eight twenty-four S, ninety-six ninety-one twenty-seven.
For the record, we now have Commissioner Toya back. All right, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. Let me go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number ninety-eight twenty-four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed barber shop. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chairman and members of the board. With your permission, I will just ask all of my witnesses at this time if they were to testify, if they would, all of that testimony would be consistent with the affidavits that were submitted. So I'll just ask them one by one by name. Mr. Ininguez, would your testimony be consistent with your affidavit?
Yes.
Good. Mr. Romero, would your testimony be consistent with your affidavit? Mr. Didskowitz, would your testimony be consistent with your affidavit?
Yes.
And Mr. Edfirst, would your testimony be consistent with your affidavit?
Yes.
Chairman, we can do a very brief presentation if you'd like that, or, or we can call it a day. There is no opposition to this case.
Are there any questions from the board? For those paying attention and watching from home, this is how you do short form. We'll take it under advisement.
Thank you, sir.
Nice shot, Counselor.
Case ninety-nine twenty-four Z, sixty-nine twenty-one twenty-seven.
Okay, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and my name is Agnes Plaka. I'm an attorney with Jaffe in Berlin located at one hundred eleven West Washington, Chicago, and I'm here to represent fifteen thirty-six West Chestnut LLC, and I have Sam Fortino on behalf of the applicant and John Hannah, our project architect, and very simply, this is a variation for three, three feet for the height, ten percent of the existing requirement of RS three district. We have a very unique block. This is a multi-unit, multi-district sort of situation here, so what we're proposing is we are RS three district. We have requirement of thirty feet height. We need to do a two duplex unit residential building, and we need that additional three feet height so that we can fit beautifully seamlessly within the existing block.
From the photos you provided, it looked like, you know, that would be consistent with that block, correct?
Absolutely. So funny, funny, funnily enough, not complying with the strict requirements of the ordinance is actually in, within intent of the actual zoning ordinance, so this is sort of like a catch twenty-two here. So with that, I have Sam Fortino to my right. Sam, state your name and address for the record.
Sam Fortino, eight five five North May, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six four two.
And Sam, the existing- And Sam, the existing building, 100-year-old, two-story frame, not really a good rehab candidate?
That is correct. It's in poor shape. It's dilapidated, and it doesn't comply to code. So we're going to place two units with two units that do comply.
And the specific land use trend on the block is actually causing those specific hardships that we have here today. So in order to be beautifully seamlessly in compliance with the existing trend, we need that variation, correct?
That is correct. To build something smaller would not fit, and it just wouldn't make much sense.
Correct. And you submitted an affidavit to the board which, where you, where we had all the testimony of yours in support of all the criteria for the variation, correct?
That is correct.
And if I continue to question you in terms of every single criteria for this variation, your testimony will be consistent with the statements in that affidavit?
It would.
Thank you. That's all that I have for him. John?
John Hannah, President of Hannah, Dixie, 180 West Washington, Chicago, Illinois.
And John, you're the project architect?
I am.
And you heard me describing the hardship, the site planning hardship. Was I correct to mention that this is a very unique block with very unique development trend with multi-unit, multi-district circumstances?
That's correct.
So the proposed variations that we have is in compliance with the intent of the ordinance and will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, correct?
Will not.
And it will not adversely affect light and air to the adjacent properties?
Will not.
And you submitted an affidavit to the board, and if I continue to question you, will your testimony be in conformance with those statements in your affidavit?
Correct.
Thank you, sir. We are happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board?
Could you just very quickly explain why the lot is unique? I'm sorry, I made a miss. Why the lot is unique?
So the lot is unique because we have an RS3 lot, which has the requirement of 30 feet height, and we are squeezed in between two buildings. One is three-story, one is four-story, and they are also RS3 district. Then down the block, we have RT4, much taller buildings, four-story buildings. We have RM5 across the street, which is, again, much, much taller than what we have. So new construction with all the high construction costs, it would just not make financial sense. We could not make a return on that investment if we just built a two-story smaller than what we have already there.
Thank you.
Appreciate the question. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? We'll take this under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
That's good. Again, for the record, my name is Agnes Plaka. I'm an attorney with Law Office of Jaffy in Berlin, and I'm here to represent Dave Willis and Aaron Willis, and I have them with me today, together with the project architect, Ian McDonald. And just to summarize, the description seems like there is a lot going on. So just to simplify, this is a very young family. We actually have beautiful photos of their four children, which we are happy to introduce into evidence if anyone would like to see them. They bought the property about two and a half years ago, and when they purchased this property, they didn't know, they were not, it was not disclosed to them, that there are some existing additions which were done possibly without permits. So now we are trying to legalize something that was done by prior owners 20 years ago just so that they can build a small one-story rear addition to enlarge their kitchen for their full children, so that we can actually get that permit. And the interesting fact is that the proposed addition, the rear addition, is designed in strict compliance with all the bulk requirements. So the variations that you have in front of you are just for those old existing additions to legalize them, okay?
Which existed when the property, when they bought the property.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. So with that, Dave, would you state your name and address for the record?
Full name is David Wills. Address is 10820 South Fairfield, Chicago, Illinois.
And when you applied for the permit for that small rear addition, only at that point during the zoning review, you were told that these additions, that there is no permit records for those additions, and they are non-conforming under the current ordinance. So we have to add them to your permit and legalize them, correct?
That is correct.
So if we cannot obtain this variation for the south side setback and combined south setback, you are not able to complete your permit, and that would cause you a great hardship for the property and for your own family?
Yes, that is also correct.
And Dave, we submitted an affidavit on your behalf where you stated all the criteria for the variation in support of the variation. So if I am to question you on each and every criteria, your testimony will still be consistent with those statements in the affidavit?
That is correct.
Ian?
Yep.
You are the project architect?
Correct.
And in terms of the land use and the trend on the block, most of the, this is a very unique block. It doesn't have galley, so everybody has driveways off Fairfield, and a lot of those houses actually also have all kinds of additions over the garages, in the back, on the side, correct?
Correct.
So whatever we're proposing with legalizing those existing additions will not alter the essential character of the block?
Correct.
And you submitted, we submitted an affidavit on your behalf where you stated your testimony in support of all the criteria for the variation, correct?
Correct.
And if I continue to question you, your testimony will be consistent in the statements in those affidavits?
Correct.
Thank you. That is all that I have.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Double checking. Still no, you don't want to see those pictures? I enjoy them so much. Thank you so very much.
Okay, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. For the record, the board recognizes Mr. Ryan's expertise. This is the department's recommendation for calendar number 10124-S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed barber shop. Counselor Moore, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you very much. My name for the record is Thomas S. Moore. Will you tell the board who you are?
A business owner.
Okay, so you are the applicant, is that right?
Yes, I am.
Through an LLC?
Yes, I am.
And the gentleman to your right is your father-in-law, and he owns the building?
Yes, he is.
What's his name?
David.
Okay.
Espinoza.
No, no, no.
Okay.
Okay. And he had an empty storefront, and he was unable to rent it, and you're a businessman, and you had friends and acquaintances who are licensed barbers, and you decided to ask your father-in-law if you could set up a barber shop in his empty store. Is that right?
Yes, that is.
And you're not a licensed barber yourself, is that right?
No, I'm not.
But you will only hire licensed barbers in your shop, is that right? What will your hours be?
It'll be nine to seven.
Okay. And you and I worked out an affidavit where you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this special use, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And we're going to skip David. We've said his role. And Mr. Ryan, will you tell us how you're related to this case?
Joseph M. Ryan, MAI, President of Sale Appraisal Group with offices at 9455 South Point Avenue in Chicago, and you asked me to, if I would examine this to see if it was acceptable
Met all the-
CBA to meet the criteria to grant a special use.
And what was the result of your study?
It did.
And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with the written report we have submitted to the board. Is that right? And we also got a letter of support from the local audit.
I do see that in the file. Any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. Board recognizes Mr. Ryan's expertise. I'll go ahead and read the recommendation for 10524-S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a proposed transitional residence for up to six adults in the front dwelling unit of a two-story, two-unit residential building with three parking spaces shared with the rear unit, reference 10623-S, provided, one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Hardin House, Inc. Two, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated March 12, 2024, prepared by Beehive. Three, the facility is exclusively utilized as a transitional shelter for adults suffering from substance abuse disorders or are justice-involved individuals, including the elderly or disabled. And four, there are no more than six adult clients residing within the front dwelling unit at any given time. Now I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number 10624-S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a proposed transitional residence for up to six adults in the rear dwelling unit of a two-story, two-unit residential building with three parking spaces shared with front unit, reference 10523-S, provided, one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Hardin House, Inc. Two, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated March 12, 2024, prepared by Beehive. Three, the facility is exclusively utilized as a transitional shelter for adults suffering from substance abuse disorders or are justice-involved individuals, including the elderly or disabled. And four, there are no more than six adult clients residing within this rear unit at any given time. Counselor Moore, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you very much. My name for the record is Thomas S. Moore. Will you tell the board who you are?
I'm Kathy Harden-Earle.
And Kathy Harden-Earle, you and I have appeared three previous times in front of this board to establish transitional residences. Is that right?
Yes.
And you continue to be the overall manager of all those three, is that right?
I am.
And you have arrangements with the Illinois Department of Corrections and with various other agencies that refer people to you, is that right?
Yes.
And so this now is, you'd like to open a fourth facility, is that right?
Yes.
And you picked this building because financially, it needs very little work to be able to, the existing facility will facilitate what you do, is that right?
Yes.
However, we've worked extensively with the planning department to arrange garbage and distance to the bus stop and all sorts of things that we have worked out. Is that right?
Yes.
And you had a history yourself as a young person. You had some addiction as well, is that right?
30 years clean and sober, February 5th, last month.
But then you went, went to school and educated yourself and got the necessary degrees, and so you've been doing this for?
Over 25 years, almost 30 years.
Okay. And you run a tight ship, is that right?
I do.
And you have rules, and if people don't follow the rules, they're out. Is that right?
Almost.
You're compassionate, of course.
Yeah, it depends on the infraction.
Okay.
But there's a strong possibility, yes.
Okay. And then you have a van, and you bring people to their doctor's appointments and their various appointments, is that right?
Yes.
And then you have sessions at, that come to your facility as well.
Yes.
And you and I worked out an affidavit where you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant a special use, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it. Is that right?
Yes.
Your name, sir?
Joseph M. Ryan, MAI, President of Sale Appraisal Group with offices at 9455 South Point Avenue in Chicago.
And over the years, you've been somewhat of a specialist, especially in your early years testifying in front of this board, about transitional homes, is that right?
Correct.
And so you've testified on behalf of Ms. Harden three previous times, isn't that right?
That's correct.
And in this particular case, you again studied this facility, this location, and came up with opinions as to whether or not this location could meet all the criteria necessary for the board to grant these two special uses, is that right?
Yes.
And what was your opinion?
It would.
And you, if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with that report that's on file, those two reports that are on file with the board, is that right? That is our case in chief.
Any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you. All right, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Liz Butler. I'm an attorney at Taft, St. Teneus and Hollister located at 111 East Wacker Drive in Chicago, and I represent the applicant in this matter, 1434 West Fillmore, I'm sorry, W. Fillmore LLC. I'll just ask my witnesses to affirm their testimony for the record. JP, could you please state your full name, business address, and your role?
Sure. James P. Bartley, business address 6405 Caton Farm Road in Plainfield, and I'm one of the principals of the applicant.
And you're aware that Taft, as counsel for the applicant, submitted the proposed findings of fact in an affidavit setting forth your testimony and signed by you in connection with the matter that we are here before the board on today, correct?
I am.
And if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the proposed findings of fact in your affidavit?
It would.
Thank you. Victor, could you please state your full name, business address, your title, and your role?
Victor Drapshaw, licensed architect for Red Architects, 2123 North Damon, Chicago, Illinois.
And you're also aware that Taft, as counsel for the applicant?
Yes, I am.
Submitted an affidavit signed by you, setting forth your testimony. And if you were to continue to testify today, your testimony would reflect the same as what was provided in the affidavit? We have a brief presentation. We're happy to answer any questions, whatever is the preference of the board.
I mean, I, my understanding, so you've got 106 lot depth, 106 feet, is that right? Okay. And that's your hardship, right? The substandard-sized lot?
That's right.
Are there any questions from the board? We'll take it under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good weekend.
You as well. All right. And that was our last one for the morning. So I move that we recess until 2:00 PM. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Oh, you know what? Scratch that. Getting ahead of myself. I move that we convene into closed session pursuant to Section 2C4 of the Open Meetings Act for the purpose of considering the evidence and testimony presented in open session. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald? Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. We're in closed session. Commissioner McDonald? Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The zoning administrator's decision is affirmed. I move to affirm the zoning administrator's decision with regard to calendar number 8624A. Commissioner Toya Seconds, Commissioner Brooks? Commissioner McDonald? Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The zoning administrator's decision is affirmed. I move to approve application for calendar number 8824S. Commissioner Toya Seconds, Commissioner Brooks? Commissioner McDonald? Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 8924S. Commissioner Toya Seconds, Commissioner Brooks? Commissioner McDonald? Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 9024S. Commissioner Toya Seconds, Commissioner Brooks? Commissioner McDonald? Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 9124S. Commissioner Toya Seconds, Commissioner Brooks? Commissioner McDonald? Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 9224S. Commissioner Toya Seconds, Commissioner Brooks? Commissioner McDonald? Commissioner Toya?
Absent.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number, calendar numbers 9324S and 9424Z. Commissioner Toya Seconds, Commissioner Brooks? Commissioner McDonald? Commissioner Toya?
Absent.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 9524S, 9624Z, and 9724Z. Commissioner Toya Seconds, Commissioner Brooks? Commissioner McDonald? Commissioner Toya?
Absent.
I vote yes. The matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 9824S. Commissioner Toya Seconds, Commissioner Brooks? Commissioner McDonald? Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 9924Z. Commissioner Toya Seconds, Commissioner Brooks? Commissioner McDonald? Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 124Z. Commissioner Toya Seconds, Commissioner Brooks? Commissioner McDonald? Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 10124S. Commissioner Toya Seconds, Commissioner Brooks? Commissioner McDonald? Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 10224Z, 10324Z, and 10424Z. Commissioner Toya Seconds, Commissioner Brooks? Commissioner McDonald? Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 10524S and 10624S. Commissioner Toya Seconds, Commissioner Brooks? Commissioner McDonald? Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 10724Z, 10824Z, and 10924Z. Commissioner Toya Seconds, Commissioner Brooks? Commissioner McDonald? Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matters are approved. I vote yes, the matters are proved. I move that we recess until two P M. Commissioner Toyah seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyah.
Yes.
I vote yes, we're in recess until two P M.